Good evening. It is seven o'clock and we are starting the October 11th Westminster City Council meeting. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We'd ask you all to turn off the ringers on your cell phone so we don't have any interruptions tonight. And after you're done with that, let's please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Fitch, will you please do the roll call?
Mayor Protem Dema.
Present.
Mayor Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Bowles.
Here.
The next item before us is the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting. Can I get a motion? Okay. I believe that is Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of September 27, 2021. Meeting is presented.
Counselor Scully.
I'd second.
There's been a motion and there's been a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All right, the meeting minutes pass. The next item are presentations, however, there are no presentations tonight, which will lead us into public comments. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council on any topic they choose, unless there is a topic for which a public hearing is also scheduled. This evening, we will have one public hearing, item 10A, the public hearing on the 24 comprehensive plan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please hold your comments until we reach that agenda item later in the evening. The current public comment portion of the meeting is not intended to be conversational, but rather a direct communication from the public to their representatives. There are four methods available for participation in public comment. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the city clerk's office. Please see the posted agenda for details on how to participate using any of the methods available. At this time, I would ask the acting city clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and introduce our first speaker. Yes, we have no voicemails this evening and one person who would like to speak live. The first person to speak will be Don Fittis. Thank you, Mr. Fittis. Please come forward. Just as a reminder, public comment is only, is limited to five minutes. You may not use any recording devices or... I don't have it in my script right now. You can't use any props, but we look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah. Good evening. This is not in regards to the comprehensive plan. Okay. My comments will be brief. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the 35 years of service of former Police Chief Carlson and the many years of service of City Manager Don Tripp. I think both served Westminster well and I wish them well in whatever endeavors they intend to pursue going forward. And I also wish City Council and staff all the best in selecting a new police chief and a new city manager. Best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fittis. I recognize no one else signed up for public testimony, but if you would like to come to the podium, we'd be happy to hear from you. Hello, Mr. Palmer.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. As I stated before, there, a public testimony is limited to five minutes. I believe you will see a yellow light come on when we are at one minute remaining.
Perfect. Jody, welcome. Good luck. Counselors, I have some concerns or some questions. These are all basically questions. I think the public is due, as well as the police officers, an update on the collective bargaining agreement, where we're at with that now. I heard a lot of comments from different people within the city, not city staff, but citizens questioning a potential conflict of interest with Abby Fitch and the elections and the proximity to her husband and Anita. I think that we need to really look at that and address that for this upcoming election. On tonight's agenda, there's a couple items. Agenda item C and agenda item D, those are both economic developments. I think to be transparent, it would be nice if you could inform the public this evening how much the rebates, tax rebates and giveaways are for those projects, just so that we all know and it's not just an agenda item. Next. Kind of curious, what is going to cost the city to hire a new city manager? A new police chief, as well as the other directors that we're currently short, including staff time and overall expenses. With that, is that money in the budget that you will be approving later this evening? So if we could put a number to that, that would be great. Something else that's come up over the weekend was there were some political campaign signs out that were vandalized, removed. This is very sad that that happened. Doesn't matter which side did it, which side they were for, but I think that our citizens should be better than that. I think your constituents, the people that you have in your camp should be better than that, whoever they are, whoever they may be. It's just a sad day. It's a sad statement. And right now, we're kind of becoming the laughing stock of the front range with everything that's been going on over the last six months. I think we need to put a stop to it. I think that point, like I say, there's, there's just some direct questions. If we could get some answers to this evening, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to make public comments? Are you having difficulty hearing me? Is this better? Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to make public comments? If so, please feel free to come to the podium. Please come forward.
I'm not sure if I'm addressing the proper subject or not, but I just came in on spur of the moment.
Thank you so much for coming. Before you start, I just want to remind you to please identify yourself since you hadn't previously signed in, and then also you have five minutes to give your public comment.
Okay. Keith Raymond, 3320 West 96th Avenue. That's between Federal and Lowell. I've lived in the city. Next year will be 50 years. Lowell, 96th Avenue was the end of the world. Lowell was a dirt path. So you know where I'm kind of coming from. I'm greatly disturbed by the types of growth that are coming into this semi-city, particularly high-density housing. The Holly Park development there will be starting up again soon, I hope. But housing density is a big problem. There have been studies for years about when you pack a whole bunch of people in a small area, a lot of things go wrong, a lot more crime. The property isn't kept up as well as for, but the single homeowners, I can say that especially the environs on 96th Avenue looks like it's dirt. It's basically dirt. Nice homes, but dirt. But that's not the only thing. It's, it's that high-density housing, which brings a lot of other problems, like I just said. Traveling on West 96th Avenue, again, I've addressed this with the police numerous times. Somebody's going to get killed in that street. A lot of people back in and out. We have elderly people living on that street, me included, that have had close calls backing out of our streets because extremely, and I mean extremely high speeds, 40, 50, 60 miles an hour, even kids passing other cars on the street. I've suggested a high-density speed trap. Once a street gets a reputation, that kind of sticks with the street over time. Doesn't have to be long-term. One or two days of intense enforcement and then just word might get out. But the high-density, what I saw or what I see that could happen at the farm development, I'm really worried about it. There should be a lot more single-family homes. Now, of course, I bought the home in 1970. Things were a whole lot different back then. House was $17,300. You can't build homes like that now, but I think an attempt should be made to build a similar type home in whatever this economy dictates for a price. Not mansions, not high-density apartments, but in-between. Even maybe even a small area of so-called tiny homes for disabled people. Disabled veterans, and I said it again, disabled veterans need cheap, affordable, decent housing. I guess that's about all I have to say. Of course, water rates suck. That was been impetus for the protests lately. And I've seen that down through lately where I get my chops busted by my wife. Don't water the lawn so much. So I hope you take my comments to heart and not just blow them off. A lot of people say, oh yeah, we'll listen to you and everything and you leave the room and whatever else happens, special interests or whatever. The average system, citizen, locally, statewide, and in this country are blown off. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to come and make a comment tonight? If so, come to the podium. Okay. Seeing none, this ends public comment. The next item on the agenda is the report of the city official.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you also, Mr. Fittis, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Raymond, for your comments. Tonight's staff are here and listening and will follow up. I'm sorry, staff are here tonight and heard your comments, so thank you and we'll follow up on things you raised. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Councilors. While City Council knows me in my capacity as deputy city manager, I wanted to introduce myself to residents who may not be as familiar, tonight serving as acting city manager. Last Thursday, Don Tripp stepped down as city manager after nearly a decade of service with the city. Mr. Tripp indicated in his resignation letter that he waited until he could resolve the matter with the Police Department's workforce workplace review and offer our Police Department clarity about their leadership before he stepped down. That time came last week when our former Chief of Police, Tim Carlson, retired from the Police Department after 35 years of service. Although these past few months have been, have felt uncertain for many, we've been working in lockstep with Acting Chief Hubbard to ensure that our sworn officers and civilian staff have what they need to best serve this community. While we're unable to comment on personnel matters, I would like City Council and Westminster residents to know that we will continue to listen to our Police Department staff and commit to continue engaging them moving forward. Similar to other cities across the nation, Westminster has been affected by what experts have now coined the Great Resignation. Whether it be relocating to be closer to family or choosing retirement, we have had our share of transitions. I want to assure City Council and the community that we serve, that we have strong executive leadership and exceptional staff throughout the organization in place to lead us through this time of transition and prepare our city for the future. It's also important to note that while we have had staff leave, we also have been the beneficiaries of talented staff choosing to come to work for the city. Our latest executive recruitments have yielded strong responses from talented candidates across the nation. We believe that once this great resignation subsides, Westminster will come out stronger with new and energized staff. As acting city manager and a proud resident of this city, I am confident that Westminster is both a great place to live and work. Our proposed budget reflects our optimism for Westminster's future and it has several initiatives focused on retaining and recruiting the very best talent. We're looking ahead to the future and doing everything we can to help our residents and businesses make a strong recovery from the pandemic. Projected revenue streams are well ahead of 2019 levels and the city is on firm financial footing. Of course, our city is more than just about a strong and balanced budget. The well-being of our residents and the vitality of our businesses remains our highest priority. As we have prior to and throughout the pandemic, we will continue to prioritize the health and safety of our residents, businesses and staff and follow the latest public health guidance. Last week, the Jefferson County Department of Public Health issued a public health order requiring anyone over the age of two to wear a mask while inside local government buildings. At this time, given that recreation centers are exempt from this public health order, the impact to our residents is minimal. We've posted signage in city facilities located in Jefferson County to make staff and visitors aware of this new public health order. We'll continue to monitor the situation and provide additional updates to City Council as the situation evolves. At the close of my comments tonight, I'm going to ask Max Kirschbaum, our Director of Public Works and Utilities and the city's lead on our COVID response efforts to provide a briefing on the Jefferson County Public Health Order. And finally, staff is present tonight to address any potential questions and concerns from stakeholders related to the city's updated comprehensive plan. That's the subject of a public hearing to begin later this evening. The comprehensive plan before you was developed according to the best planning practices of the American Planning Association and was informed by community feedback from across 21 public meetings and events. This plan maintains or preserves nearly 99% of the city's existing land use. Of the 1% or roughly 290 acres left that is impacted by the comprehensive plan, 170 acres will see a proposed decrease in residential or commercial activity. Effectively, the comprehensive plan would potentially reduce the density of the 1% of the city it directly affects. Following public input tonight at the public hearing, staff will be present and welcome City Council's guidance and feedback on this important city plan. With that, I conclude the city manager's report and I would now ask Mr. Kirschbaum to provide a briefing for us on the Jefferson County Public Health Order that went into effect this weekend. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Kirschbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities, and I'd like to just give a little bit of context to the comments that Jody began with on Jefferson County's public health orders and where we stand implementing those. As Jody said, on Thursday evening, October 7th, the Board of Health convened. They approved Public Health Order 21004, which deals with face coverings in government buildings in Jefferson County. Those would be both county buildings as well as municipal buildings across Jefferson County. The effective date of the, of the order that was approved that evening and published the next day on the 8th of October was to be effective at 12:01 a.m. on October 9th. That was Saturday morning. City leadership met early Friday morning following the, the decision by Board of Health on Thursday evening to discuss immediate implementation and possible impacts to city operations throughout the weekend leading into this morning's beginning of the week. The determination was made that the order that was signed affected fire stations three and five. Those are the two stations that are located within Jefferson County within our city. Two water treatment facilities, which over the weekend have no more than two people working over the weekend hours. The municipal service center, which effectively has just people who may come and go throughout the weekend, but really no work hours throughout the weekend. The former U.S. Bank facility, which is currently housing some city staff within the downtown Westminster development area. And notably, we, we had been instructed that recreation and park facilities would be addressed although, although they were not specifically identified in the published order. So we took that to mean that on the order of, or excuse me, at the, at the word of the public health official, Dr. Comstock, that they would, they would be exempted. We did not take any extraordinary efforts on park and rec facilities throughout the weekend. As Jody said, buildings were posted or have been posted today. There was one provision within that order that's a little bit different than what we had seen in the past. And some members of council were on that Thursday evening meeting and heard the debate directly, but the decision was finally agreed upon that if within a building or within a defined separated portion of a building, if, if 90% vaccination rate was achieved, that the mask order would not be in effect for that defined area. We hadn't seen that in some of the previous orders that had been released. And as I said, the, the recommendate, or we understood that the recreation and park facilities would be later addressed. I'll address that in a minute because they were addressed today. So that, that was the summary of Friday night. That order went into effect and for those, those same facilities today, we have dealt with accounting for those who may or may not be vaccinated. And in some cases, we have been able to take advantage of 90% vaccination rate and mask exemption. In other cases, we're wearing masks when indoors. Today, October 11th, the Board of Health for Jefferson County convened again, this time at noon. Was primarily to address the second topic, which is testing for government employees at county and municipal level within Jefferson County. I'll preface my, my couple remarks to say that there should be a final order that is published within the next day or two on this subject. Essentially, it will require that regular testing and reporting of tests for unvaccinated employees. The effective date is set to be November 1st, so there are a couple weeks in which to prepare for that date. And just as we did with the first order, our city managers' policy group or that we've had in effect since the beginning of the pandemic will again consider how to examine, to examine and how to implement the, the specific items that get published in that order. Also, on a second topic from today's Board of Health meeting, they approved once again unanimously four to zero to amend the order that was published on Friday. And we expect to see that printed update tomorrow, but the, what I heard today was that it will exempt recreation facilities that are open to the public. That's the definition that was given. At this time, that wraps up a summary of the two orders with Jefferson County Public Health. I have made contact with, a point of contact with Tri-County Health and I, I asked specifically if Tri-County Health would be considering the same or similar type orders that, as Jefferson County, and the response that I received is that they are not pursuing a public health order for either face covering or for testing of employees within Adams County at this time. All of those things are probably subject to change, but at this time, they are not pursuing that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Mr. Andrews, do you have anything else?
Mayor, can I ask some follow-up questions on that?
Yeah, Mr. Kirschbaum, it appears Council would like to ask you if you follow up questions. And I believe starting with Counselor Scully.
Mr. Kirschbaum, thank you very much for that report and I appreciate you summarizing the meeting. I was on that meeting and it's, I did not get to come back today to listen to some of the finalization. So one of my questions is, is that as a, as a city, how do we, how do we navigate this between two counties? We have one county that's saying they're going to put this mandate in. We have another county that says, no, we're not. And I don't know, I don't know how we are going to get through that as a city that crosses two counties. It affects our public health, our first responders, our, our public works people. It seems inequitable. And so I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
The mask order was very specific to address buildings within Jefferson County, so that's why we identified the buildings that would be applicable and we are ensuring compliance with that public health order on the facilities that, that exist in Jefferson County. At this time, we don't have a, a plan to extend, extend that across the entire city.
And then you said that if, if an area had 90% vaccination, how, how will we monitor that? Are we going to require to see cards or? What is our, do we have a plan on that or are we still working on it?
No, we, we've already implemented that today. The, it is allowable to ask employees if they are vaccinated or not vaccinated. Up till this point, we have not taken that opportunity to do so unless, unless that information was volunteered or unless there was a case that was being followed up on by HR with a positive report. So for the masking order portion, this is probably going to be different when we talk about how we will implement testing. And as I said, I don't want to get ahead of myself on the testing because we haven't had a chance to discuss that yet. But on the masking, we took it acceptable with a verbal answer by the employee that yes, they are or no, they are not fully vaccinated. We had, we did not demand of our employees to provide proof of that today.
Okay. And so can you tell us, I know- I know that Jefferson County was concerned because I know that the bed rate is up in Jefferson County, where they have, they don't have enough beds. And I know that they feel that there's an increase in people who have been sick. Is Adams County experiencing that? Maybe that's why they've decided not to mandate masks and vaccinations.
It might be a good question for Tri-County Health directly. I don't know the answer to that. I'm primarily interested in making sure that we properly implement published orders.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I believe Counselor Smith.
Thank you. And Mr. Kirschbaum, I was on the call on Thursday. I don't know if it came up in today's meeting. I don't recall it coming up on Thursday. But do we know the cost, the testing costs, would the burden fall on for that cost?
There are multiple options for testing that were discussed during their Board of Health meeting today. Most of those are free to the individual. Sometimes there are costs associated with it if a person were to choose to obtain a rapid antigen test. But as it's been referred to by the public health officer, the gold standard being the PCR test, which is the test that individuals can obtain at any of the testing locations. In our case, typically, that might be Waterworld or at Front Range Community College. Those are free to the individual. There is no cost.
And would that then fall into work time for testing? How does, I'm sure it's new, so we don't.
As I said, we have not had an opportunity to discuss this among the city manager's policy group. But it would be a recommendation from me to that group that we would implement similarly to the testing that we did earlier in the pandemic, that you will recall when we did this with firefighters, with police officers, and with plant operators. And virtually 100% of the time, maybe not all, maybe not absolutely 100%, but nearly 100%, those tests were conducted on duty time. So individuals were not required to obtain them in their off-duty time.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum, for the report. I have a couple of quick questions. And they're along those same lines and things I've asked in the past. I did listen to most of that call. And I had to drop off towards the end of it. But when they're talking about like potential vaccination mandates and the opt-out through tests, I think it's pretty common in employers right now that they have those options so that they're not having to fully mandate, which I'm glad there's an out. But one of the things that I don't understand that continues to seem to be a moving goalpost, I understand this is the Health Department, but I'm just trying to understand, you know, it was 70% vaccination rate. Now we're saying 90% vaccination rate. Really seems like we're inching toward either get vaccinated or we're going to keep doing this. And at some point, I'm wondering, even as a city, when do you push back? Because I do believe, in my opinion, my principle says that some people aren't going to do it and they shouldn't have to do it in a free society. So with that being said, do we, what's the goal and what's the end date? So if they're saying that they want to make people test, if they're not going to get vaccinated, did they give us some sort of goal line that needs to be crossed in order for that to stop?
Well, in either of these two meetings that I attended on Thursday and this morning, I did not personally hear any discussion about a vaccination mandate. I would be surprised if that's where, if that's the direction they're headed. If it is, they sure haven't indicated any such in these most recent meetings. I think that's why the focus has been on, you know, just the public health aspect of mask wearing and the use of testing to try to keep the employee population as healthy as possible. But that's the best I can offer. I don't know where that rate is going or whether, as science evolves and experience evolves, if that number keeps getting pushed higher. I don't know. I thought it was interesting the way they debated it on Thursday night, how they ended up with 90%. One could say that was a bit arbitrary, but that's where they landed.
And that makes sense, and I appreciate that. And I know a lot of this, you're just reporting back. But you know, since you're kind of the one who is dealing with this on an ongoing basis. One of my concerns, and you know, this is for the city in general, is if other cities decided that they're going to go the mandate route. They've certainly lost people, and we've seen that nationally. And so in this hard environment to maintain people's employment, I think that that's, you know, is worrisome, in my opinion. Those are all my questions. So I appreciate you continuing to stay on top of this and all your work throughout this pandemic. So thank you, sir.
I just want to really quickly chime in and echo what Director Kirschbaum said. I've been on many calls with Jefferson County Public Health Executive Director, Dr. Comstock. And I've never once heard the suggestion of a vaccine mandate rather requiring testing and being able to opt out with proof of vaccine. And so I do believe that is the route that they've selected to go forward. And the way she's described her thought process on this, and I think it resonated with the Board of Health, was that oftentimes, when people interact with government employees, they don't get to choose who they're interacting. So to protect our public, making sure that we have testing so we know someone's not spreading the virus to anyone in the workplace, but also to our residents who, you know, it might be a firefighter coming to an emergency call. It might be a lot of situations where we don't have a, that resident doesn't have a choice. And so just making sure we're not putting them at undue risk is what she described when she was talking about her desire for this order. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I guess my only follow-up with that, and again, neither of this is in either of your control. But like I said, we keep inching further and further. And when I look nationally at some of the trends and I see cities starting to require vaccination mandates for people to eat food or have jobs, that's troubling to me. And I think that this whole council and this whole staff is definitely focused on public health, and that's the right thing to do. But I also think that it's 100% above board, so to speak, to question these things as we see this shift because it is concerning to me when we start seeing that nationally.
I will say, on behalf of our city manager, I did comment during the public comment portion of today's meeting. And what I asked of them is in alignment with what you're saying is, I urged them to coordinate their action with Tri-County Health and with the other local public health agencies because, you know, we got to a point earlier in the pandemic where, at least because there was uniformity across the public health agencies and the orders that they were issuing, it was easier to work through them. That's not where we are now. You know, I think they heard the comment, but I don't know that it'll make much difference.
I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. I had a few comments to make along that. I participated in both of the meetings last week. I was not available for the last vote. But I did make a comment on Thursday evening meeting because the discussion earlier in the week surrounded about protecting those who have public-facing jobs and the fact that there are some things that especially at the county level, you have to go to. This does not include courtrooms because they're under a separate state order. So, but it then changed into all county and municipal buildings, whether they were forward-facing to the public or not. And so that was a comment that I delivered that evening, was that I felt that they had missed the mark on that and gone too far. And I continue to believe so because if we look at the data, and this is just one of the many metrics that are out there. But this was a metric that was looked at by the state. It doesn't do any of the dials or any of the guides anymore, but it is another metric to judge where we are at. On 9/17 in Jefferson County, we had 1.38 residents per 100,000 hospitalized. As of 10/1, we're at 1.8 per 100,000. Regardless of the test positivity rate, which we know fluctuates by the number of people that are testing and whether we look at early on and in 2020, when we're in March, April, May, June, the people that were getting tested were the people who were sick. So our positivity rates were in the 20% to 25% range. Now we're looking at a more moderate range of 5% to 6%. So I think we have not defined where we want to go and how we're going to get there. And we're going to continue to do this when we have unelected public health officials dealing with this pandemic, which is still a pandemic because we have yet to get to 100% infection rate worldwide, which we will be at some point. So those are my comments for the seat.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. The next item on our agenda is our comments from city council. Typically, as mayor, I go last and allow my colleagues to go first. But before we start our city council comments, I would like to acknowledge the departure of Don Trip, former city manager. On Thursday of last week, Mr. Trip tendered his resignation. And I'd like to read his statement because I think it's beautifully written and it communicates his dedication to this community. "I have for some time now believed that what we needed, that we needed a change, a new voice to guide city staff. And while there is never a perfect time to let go of the reins, I have informed the city council that today is my last day as city manager. I am thankful to have a strong executive team, and I am confident that they will ensure that the city will have a smooth transition. Jody Andrews will serve as acting city manager while the council begins the search process. It has been truly an honor to serve alongside you this past decade. From building the new downtown and putting Westminster on firm financial footing for years to come, to strengthening affordable housing options for our most vulnerable residents, we have accomplished a great deal together as a team. The work that we do every day makes life better for every resident of Westminster. The work that we do is nearly invisible to the normal resident because you all are so good at your jobs. Safe streets, clean drinking water, and beautiful parks and libraries are the expectation, and you deliver that level of service each and every day. Whatever adventures and opportunities that are presented to me in the future, I will bring along the lessons and expertise that I have learned working alongside all of you. Thank you for allowing me to be your leader for these past seven years." On behalf of city council, I want to thank Mr. Trip for his service to our community. Under Trip's leadership, Westminster embarked on an ambitious redevelopment of a new downtown that attracted regional and nationally recognized businesses. City manager Trip also strengthened the city's affordable housing portfolio. And coming out of the pandemic, our city is on solid financial footing. And we're in the midst of a robust economic recovery. Don is a dynamic and solution-oriented leader, and he has built a strong executive team that will continue to ensure our city and infrastructure are delivered equitably, sustainably, and effectively. I thank Don for his near decade of service with our city. And I agree with him that our city has a strong leadership team. And I'm confident that we will continue to provide high-quality city services while we begin our search for a permanent city manager. I would like to say thank you to Deputy Andrews for helping lead us through this transition and taking on this role. I know it's a big job, but happy that you are here to do it. With that being read, I would like, if any of my colleagues would have public comments. I believe Counselor Scully is next.
I believe that Counselor Demont was on before us.
Okay. I apologize. We typically have a roster, so when a person's light comes up, it will let me know. Right now, it's numbers, and they're not sequential for some reason this time. So Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. You can go ahead.
I'll fight you for it. So I just have a few reports for tonight. First of all, I too would like to express my best wishes to our former city manager, Don Trip. He did serve our city in a very good manner, and he saw us through a lot of change and a lot of great projects. And his work will live, he leaves a long legacy. I also wanted to wish Chief Carlson well on his retirement. And I wanted to welcome city manager Jody Andrews to your position. And thank you for taking on this great task and look forward to working with you. Growing Home had their annual benefit last Friday. It was very well-attended. Everyone that I met with had masks on, so that felt good, too. And they talked a lot about the need for housing and food and things that we need to do in our community. So I'm really proud that Westminster has such a strong partnership with Growing Home and that that will continue. On Saturday, we had the Metzger Farm Historical Sign Celebration. Had the great opportunity to meet Mr. Bill Metzger, who is the, I believe, the grandson of the owner of the farm. And he was just a delight, had a lot to share, and it was really enjoyable. This morning, I had the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport meeting. We heard from many public citizens of our communities. And there were lots to share. There were people on both sides of the fence about the airport and even some in the middle. And it was good to hear all of the public comment. Appreciated that. We heard a report from Louisville in the study. Westminster, Brimfield, and Jefferson County opted not to participate in that study, although I'm not really sure if we were even a part of the intergovernmental agreement when that study was completed. It was a resounding movement from the Noyes Roundtable to move forward. We feel like we've heard a lot and we are ready to start seeing what we can do to really start to think about the noise that is going on around the airports. So a task force is being formed, and they will start working on what can we do? What are some of the steps that can be taken? So that was good to hear. I wanted to thank everyone who shared their public comments with us today. There is no greater way to show your voice, share your voice with us than to come and do public comment. And I always appreciate hearing everybody's opinions. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to share I was able to participate in in the last week. The first being that the Annual Chamber Gala[1671.26] The first being that the Annual Chamber Gala was a good event where they got to celebrate different businesses in the community, as well as former Mayor Atchison received an award for his years of service. And I have to say, he echoed a lot of what you heard from former city manager Trip's comments as far as staff, now really you're the ones who deserve the award, not him. I thought that was really nice of him to recognize you and for the chamber to recognize him. On Saturday, I had the honor of being in the Westminster High School Homecoming Parade, had a float in it, and that's always a good time if you've ever got to participate in that. Threw out plenty of candy, probably too much, but better than me eating that candy. So it was a great event, well-attended on the parade route, and I appreciate all the PD that was out there keeping everybody safe as they went down the route.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Are there any other comments? Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also wanted to kind of echo what my colleagues have said. I want to recognize Don Trip for his service to our city. I always respected him. He was a good man. He did a lot of good work here. I enjoyed working with him, so I wish him well in whatever his new endeavors are. I also want to follow that up by thanking Acting City Manager Jody Andrews for stepping up. It's extra work, and thank you for agreeing to do that. I want to thank our whole leadership team, Larry Dorr, Barbara Opie, for also stepping up. I'm sure it's incredible change and a lot more work, so thank you for all your efforts. I also want to wish Tim Carlson well in retirement, and I want to thank Acting Chief Halber for stepping up also and doing the work he's doing. So thank you all for making our city run well and keeping us on track, so thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
I just want to add on to that best wishes for our city manager Trip and his endeavors in the future, and good health for he and his family. And then also, a special shout-out to Chief Tim Carlson, who I've known for a great many years, and I wish him absolutely the best in his retirement. And also, thanks to Acting City Manager Jody Andrews for taking on this task and working with this council as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I do have just a real brief update from last week that I'd like to go through now. I would be remiss if I also did not mention Chief Carlson and wish him well on his retirement. Thirty-five years is a lot of years of service to give to a community, and we appreciate that. I also want to say thank you to Acting Chief Halber for stepping into the role, and we wish you well. I have to report really quickly on an event, a community event, that our police department participated in this year and have for the last 10 years that I have attended this event. Cotton Creek Elementary School every year has a pumpkin run, and our police department goes and assists the students, giving them kind of a pace car at the beginning and a tail car to make sure there's no accidents. And it's a huge community event. This year, they brought their special SWAT, don't want to call it a tank, but their armored vehicle out for the kids to see. And those are the really wonderful moments in the community where you're building rapport between the police department and our youth and the parents, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. Later that evening, there was a Denver Regional Council of Government Working Group, and after, I feel like every week I come, I talk to you about the greenhouse gas emission rulemaking process. But the Denver Regional Council of Governments, one of the largest MPO that will be impacted by the rulemaking, did unanimously agree to notes and requests to be given to CDOT. So that was, after all of that conversation, we came to a unanimous decision, so that was lovely. The next day, the Northwest mayors and commissioners met, and one of the things they really asked all of the different communities along the corridor to do is to write letters to RTD asking us to restore our service along the US 36th corridor and to maximize the investments that were made on the Flatiron wire routes. And so our team, I believe Mayor Protam was on this call, we deferred from signing onto a letter that called out only specific sites because we wanted to make sure we don't cannibalize any Westminster routes in support of other communities' routes. But I believe that we will be looking at writing a letter with Broomfield, Westminster and Broomfield to do a joint letter advocating for some of those routes. The next meeting that I had was a very fun meeting indeed. It was with the Youth Advisory Panel, and so we had about 13 kids in high school across schools across Westminster that are really eager and excited to give service work back to this community. I got to meet each one of them, learn what they're passionate about, and we have some really great kids. It went from senior issues, senior citizen issues, to affordable housing, the environment and ecology, and just really wanting to make a difference and make connections with other kids and their deeper connections to their community as they do that. So I look forward to continuing to work with that group. Finally, on Friday, Mayor Protam and I had the CML Policy Committee Meeting. So this is the Colorado Municipal League, and we're looking at bills and proposed bills that would impact local governments. A good bulk of the meeting were potential bills that other local governments wanted the Colorado Municipal League to run, and we will be sending an update as to where everything landed to both rest of council and also to our policy teams so they can follow up on it. And then finally, had some really great community events at Growing Home and Metzger Farms, but it was a busy week, doing a lot of stuff with community members, and I think for all of us on council, that's why we're here, and that's what we love to do. So with that, that ends city council comments. The next item before us is the Consent Agenda, and the Consent Agenda is a group of routine matters that's to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Council, at this time, does any member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? MPT? Or Mayor Protam?
No.
Okay. You're just wanting to make the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Protam, will you make the motion?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda, item 8A.
Okay. And Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Mayor Protam Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Thank you so much. The next item before us are appointments and resignations. Can I get a motion on item 9A1? Mayor Protam Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept Mr. Trip's resignation effective of the close of business October 7, 2021.
Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Demott. The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is item A2. Mayor Protam, will you finish out this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 41, appointing Deputy City Manager Jody Andrews as acting city manager.
And Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
I apologize on the previous motion. I did not ask for questions, comments, or concerns. Does anyone have any with this item? Mayor Protam.
Just echo what everybody said earlier, that we thank Mr. Trip for his service and wish him well, and thank you, Jody, for stepping up into this role. I know it's a lot of extra work, and we appreciate you doing it.
See no other comments? This is also a roll call vote. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Before we go into the next item, which is a public hearing, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute break because I have a feeling that might be a lengthy item. All right. The time right now is 7:55. We will be adjourned at 8 o'clock. The time is 8:02, and we are going to reconvene as Westminster City Council here. The first item that we're going to discuss now that we're back is item 10A1, which is to hold a public hearing on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and receive community feedback. It is now 8:03. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. There are now four methods available for participation in the public hearing. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting. This seems wrong. I'm apologizing. I'm thinking my script is wrong. Don't we typically hear your presentation first prior to opening the public hearing? I apologize. We're going to back up, everybody. The first item is 10A, which is the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I would ask city manager Andrews, Acting City Manager Andrews and Mr. Spurgeon if they would like to introduce the plan to the room.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, City Council. I am going to go straight to our presenter and speaker tonight. It's Mr. Spurgeon, Andrew Spurgeon. He's our principal planner. He'll be presenting the plan before you and also serving to answer questions that you may have following that.
Thank you, City Manager Andrews. Not used to saying that. Good evening, Mayor Sykes, Mayor Protam Demott, and city councilors. As City Manager Andrews said, I'm Andrew Spurgeon, long-range planner in community development. I do have a PowerPoint. Hopefully Curtis can bring that up for us. We reviewed the draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan with council at the April 5 study session, and then we came back to you on August 2 for an additional discussion time to help us form a final draft of the plan, and that is what is before you tonight for consideration. The final draft incorporates those edits that we reviewed during the August 2 study session. There was an attachment on August 2, Attachment 8, back on the August 2 agenda with the edits, and those are what are incorporated into the final draft. The changes are meaningful and yet limited in number to the point that the pagination didn't change. If you made notes on a certain page in the first draft, it's the same page in this final draft, so really easy to toggle back and forth between those. For the benefit of our audience tonight, I do want to review in this presentation the organization of the document and then the criteria of approval established by our Westminster Municipal Code. Also, for the benefit of the audience, I do want to clarify that the proposed Uplands Development is being processed under the existing 2013 Comprehensive Plan. It was submitted in 2018 as a site-specific development plan, and therefore it falls under the existing comprehensive plan. It is not part of this new comprehensive. Next slide, please. The purpose of the item before you is to receive staff's recommendation and hold a legislative public hearing. The agenda memo attachments and public comments are entered into the public record, and this hearing has been noticed as required by municipal code. The purpose of a legislative hearing is to consider the appropriateness of citywide policy to inform future decision-making, which is unlike a quasi-judicial hearing, which you more typically have, which is about a specific project, a specific location. Staff's recommendation is outlined in the agenda memo and is informed by the criteria of municipal code, Section 1132. If the plan is not approved tonight, then the existing 2013 Comprehensive Plan would remain in effect. Next slide, please. At the February 1 city council meeting, staff provided a summary of input that informed the plan, and this material is incorporated into Appendix B of the plan document. Engagement included a presence at a number of community events, online activities, stakeholder interviews, and communications through a number of different avenues. We also sought out some specific audiences that we wanted to make sure were heard in this process. We were in the meetings of the Youth Advisory Panel twice, actually. We reached out to the Mung community. We attended Latino Festival. We had a couple of presentations with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, the Home Builders Association in Metro Denver, and an individual presentation was also made to a representative of the Save the Farm Organization. Spanish translation services were available at city-hosted events, and a Mung translator helped us at our meeting at the Community Garden. Availability of the first draft plan was first publicized on April 1, 2021. In addition to the online interface, hard copies of the plan were available at both the College Hill and Irving Street libraries. A summary of comments on the first draft is included in Attachment 9. Twenty-six different referral agencies were notified as required by municipal code and as described in the agenda memo. Individual referral agency responses are included in Attachments 11 and 12. After the August 2 study session, we also developed a frequently asked questions document in both English and Spanish to explain the plan's purpose, content, and limitations, and this is included as Attachment 3. And most recently, we created an interactive online map to help residents understand land uses by location. We did get some feedback that the PD We did get some feedback that the PDF of the plan, the land use diagram was hard to understand or interpret so we created this interactive online map that allows viewers to zoom in on a location or even search by address and they can see the land use both in the proposed plan as well as the land use that was established in the prior comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. This slide shows the basis of the plan's policy chapters organized around the shared Westminster Forward planning themes. Each of the plan's policy chapters begins with a background narrative of existing conditions, trends and challenges and identifies a series of goals followed by policies to help realize the goals. Land use is just one policy within the plan and should be considered within the overall plan content relative to economic resiliency, public health and resource conservation. The cross-cutting topics of education, equity, health, resilience and safety are peppered throughout each chapter with the climate cross-cutting topic added as a result of the August 2nd study session and connected to 25 plan goals and 44 plan policies. The added emphasis on equity, health, resilience and climate are new concepts as compared to the existing comprehensive plan and ensures alignment with the Sustainability Plan and other Westminster Forward plans. The next few slides will review the plan's main chapters. Next slide, please. With this slide, I'm going back to one of the first activities in public engagement, which is where areas were identified with either the largest vacant parcels or where redevelopment was anticipated. Public engagement featured a visual preference activity to select land uses, building types and amenities for each. At the time of public engagement, these were called opportunity areas or areas of change to emphasize how the majority of the city is expected to remain stable. The profiles of these areas in Chapter 2 of the plan will augment the land use map with considerations such as views, trail connections or park locations. The focus area concept from the existing comprehensive plan will continue. However, we're adding a second tier called transition areas. These are not the same as focus areas. These are rather the unique places in the city that warrant special considerations beyond just a color on the land use map. But they will not be developed at the scale or intensity of focus areas. I've been asked why the Westminster Heights Transition Area is included in the plan if the proposed Uplands Development is being processed under the existing 2013 Comprehensive Plan. The reason is that the Transition Area includes other properties in that area that warrant special consideration, such as St. Anthony 84th Avenue. Without the additional framework for parks, trail connections in the public realm, staff is simply left with a color on the land use map and then are forced to negotiate with the developer on matters such as parks, trails or street connections. Additional content in Chapter 2 thus increases transparency and establishes expectations. With the city almost built out with only small areas anticipated for development, the Land Use and Development Chapter was greatly influenced by this exercise. With this in mind, land use changes within the plan are limited to those properties within or adjacent to those areas as shown in the graphic on the right. Next slide, please. Land Use and Development, which is Chapter 3 of the plan, is one of the five main chapters with goals and policies and is organized around the five goals as shown on this slide. The land use diagram, also known as land use map, is a key policy element of the plan and is shown on Page 67 within the plan document. It maintains nearly 99% of the city's land area with existing or equivalent land uses and seeks to respect existing development patterns while also providing for housing, commercial revitalization and economic development. Of the remaining 1%, the net impact is a decrease in commercial intensity or residential density. The predominant land uses are parks, golf courses and open space, accounting for 37% of the city's land area. At the other end of the spectrum, the land uses that occur the least often are those with the highest densities, mixed-use activity center and specific plan, which are only 2% of the land area, multifamily uses are 4% of the land area. Be mindful that these percentages include existing development. A breakdown of land uses by area is shown in Attachment 6 and the locations with proposed land use changes are shown in Attachment 7. The locations with the largest parcels subject to a proposed change in land use include the Foster Farm and St. Anthony North property in the North I-25 area and the Water 2025 site in the Church Ranch. There are no land use changes associated with the proposed Uplands Development since the PDP application is under review under the existing 2013 Comprehensive Plan. Sustainable design is an area of this chapter with noteworthy differences from the existing comprehensive plan. While this topic was introduced in the prior plan, the policies are updated to align with the Sustainability Plan and the Transportation Mobility Plan, including the need to plan for walkable neighborhoods, renewable energy, preservation of natural areas and green infrastructure. Next slide, please. While we're waiting for the next slide to come up, I will go on and start speaking to it. The Transportation Mobility and Connection Goals reflect those in the separate Transportation Mobility Plan, or TMP as we call it, which was adopted by City Council on August 25th. The overarching goals in the Comprehensive Plan support a transportation network to serve the land use map and other community needs. Specifically, the Comprehensive Plan's land use element informed population and employment figures in the transportation model. Since the TMP has already been adopted by council, it is essential that the Comprehensive Plan matches it. The Health, Wellness and Community Services Chapter carries over much of the content from the plan's existing chapter on Parks, Recreation Libraries and Open Space and the existing plan's chapter on Public Utilities and Services. This revised structure aligns with Westminster Forward themes but also adjusts the focus from how these topics relate to land planning to a more holistic view of public health, wellness and the need for policies in areas such as support for local food production, access healthy foods, which is a change from the existing plan. Development of the Parks, Recreation Libraries Plan will follow the Comprehensive Plan with more specific content on park and trail development, recreation libraries, arts and culture and historic preservation. Residents interested in establishing additional parks and open-spaced lands are encouraged to participate in the Parks, Recreation Libraries Plan since the Comprehensive Plan only designates parks and open space on publicly owned and managed properties due to legal considerations. At such time additional parks and open-spaced lands are acquired, the Comprehensive Plan may be amended to reflect such designations. The plan recognizes the need for additional parks south of 92nd Avenue, which is not something addressed in the existing Comprehensive Plan. Economic Resilience, Chapter 6, has some of the most extensive changes as compared to the existing plan. The Economic Development Department contracted with the CU Boulder Lead School of Business to understand the economic character and the trends affecting the city as it looks to a post-pandemic future and considerations for future financial sustainability. The 2040 Plan builds on concepts of the existing plan's economic element with correlation of land use with neighborhood planning, workforce readiness and financial sustainability and this aligns in the shift and emphasis from traditional recruitment retention activities to a Westminster appropriate framework of supporting small and local businesses and workforce development. This chapter recognizes that Westminster neighborhood, neighboring communities effectively function as one regional employment and housing market with significant flows of labor across municipal borders in all directions. Finally, another key topic in this chapter is the city's financial sustainability. Policies include evaluation of revenue diversification opportunities, proactivity with industry changes that may impact sales tax revenue and a recommendation to develop a fiscal impact model to evaluate future land use changes. Staff is aware of several businesses who are awaiting on adoption of the 2040 Plan to move forward with new employment opportunities, including a potential Fortune 500 company adjacent to Rocky Mountain Airport, as well as sites within Westmore, Tri-State and Foster Farm in the North I-25 area. Next slide, please. Housing and Neighborhoods, which is Chapter 7, was elevated as a key topic for the plan to address in recognition of the city's built-out condition, aging neighborhoods and the need to support the resiliency of established areas. The 2040 Plan introduces a neighborhood planning lens for new development to consider how a proposal fits within a greater neighborhood context with access to services, supporting transportation and compatibility with neighborhood character. Echoing content from the Sustainability Plan, the 2040 Plan proposes new policies to support housing maintenance and neighborhood services. The city has put great care into planning residential communities but as these neighborhoods age, there's a need to put equal care into their maintenance and long-term resiliency. This is a paradigm shift from the existing Comprehensive Plan that more singularly focuses on new development. Utilities and Resources, Chapter 8, outlines goals for the provision of city utilities, infrastructure and public services. As compared to the existing plan, water conservation is embedded as part of the water supply discussion. In regard to projecting future water demand, most communities look at future population and extrapolate out a projection, which is a simple linear calculation. Westminster has innovated with a finer-grained analysis to consider different types of development and their very different water demands. This variable land use approach continued with the current water supply plan and also evaluated the effects of weather and conservation as presented to City Council on March 15th, 2021 and is shown as Attachment 8. With the let out of the city, the impact of land use on the few remaining vacant lands becomes less critical over time in the context of resources and infrastructure, while drought is the most significant threat to the resiliency of the city's water supply. Other goals in Chapter 8 identify equity considerations for infrastructure policies and cost of service and a new policy to support deployment of low-cost citywide communication technologies in consideration of the digital divide. This increased focus on community resiliency is again another change as compared to the existing plan. Next slide, please. Chapter 9 of the plan is Plan Administration. This chapter describes how it will be used in future decision-making, including development review and with future amendments. Some land uses shown in the first draft, the April 1st draft, were removed from the final draft in order to allow consideration of those at a later time when a preliminary development plan can be brought forward to offer the opportunity to tailor the range of uses, scale and intensities to a specific site and ensure additional opportunities for participation from adjacent neighborhoods. The plan does not change the zoning on any property in Westminster. Only City Council can do that through separate action. This chapter also establishes a biennial reporting process to assess plan progress and identify where adjustments may be needed. A separate implementation action plan is included in Attachment 13 and will be housed outside of the plan document due to the frequency of updates based on budgets, city council priorities, staff capacity and external variables. In terms of the plan's cost, the document explicitly states there is no specific financial commitment to implement the plan. Public Works and Utilities has identified that the 2040 Plan has infrastructure costs in line with past capital improvement planning. Fiscal impact analysis of the land use map was revenue positive for the city over the plan's 20-year horizon. With a reduced emphasis on new development as the city reaches build-out, the focus in future years will be in fostering employment development and support for existing neighborhoods and business districts. The shift in emphasis to better support and maintain what we already have is echoed in the Sustainability Plan, Water Supply Plan and Transportation Mobility. Next slide, please. Westminster Municipal Code establishes criteria for adopting the Comprehensive Plan, which is included in Attachment 14. The first four criteria relate to the suitability of the plan content and three additional criteria relate to the planning process. Staff's overall analysis finds the plan is in conformance with all the criteria. Development of the plan started with an inventory and review of 48 different plans from throughout the city organization. Following this baseline analysis, the plan developed as part of Westminster Forward. The Sustainability Plan, Water Supply Plan and Transportation Mobility Plan are complete. So tonight you have before you the Comprehensive Plan and then next up will be the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Plan. A coordinated community engagement program was critical to developing the plan and this is described in Appendix B of the plan document. Five work sessions were conducted with the Planning Commission. Six presentations were held with City Council, four of them since November of last year, plus four additional information-only Agenda Memos. The plan is cognizant of the city's vision statement as revised in 2020 and expands upon the concepts of the strategic plan through 46 goal statements within five chapters as described in this presentation. The language within the plan is a direct result of input from staff from throughout the city organization. The draft plan was sent to 26 different referral agencies for review. Responses were received from Adams 12 Five-Star Schools, City of Arbada, City County of Brimfield, Colorado Department of Transportation, Jefferson County, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, City of Thornton, Tri-County Health, Westminster Public Schools and Smart Commute North. As a result of concern for input on Chapter 5, Health, Wellness and Community Services, identified by Counselor Smith during the August 2nd study session, an additional request for review was sent to Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District, Apex Parks and Recreation District, Growing Home, Jefferson County Public Health and members of the Parks, Recreation Libraries Open Space Advisory Board. Growing Home offered the most substantive comments resulting in updates to the final draft, shown in Attachment 12. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that City Council approve an ordinance to adopt the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Staff's recommendation is based on the criteria set forth in Westminster Municipal Code, Section 1132, and that the public good is advanced by plan goals and policies aligned with other Westminster Forward plans complementary to the city's vision. The existing plan was developed nearly 10 years ago and is unresponsive to a number of the city's changing needs in areas such as public health, the changing nature of employment, workforce development. The Planning Commission recommended approval on September 14th. Next slide, please. The plan complements the city's vision for a thriving community of safe neighborhoods and beautiful open space that is sustainable and inclusive and meets all of the 2021 Strategic Plan goals. This concludes my presentation and I will turn it over to the mayor to open the public hearing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spurgeon. At this time, 8:23, I would like to open the public hearing for the public comment portion. So there are four methods available for participation in the public hearing. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the City Clerk's office. At this time, I would ask Acting City Clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and introduce our first speaker.
We have five in-person speakers. Zero people have requested to speak online and we have two voicemails to play back. So our first in-person speaker is Brandon Jenkins.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brandon Jenkins. I'm the managing partner for St. John Properties, Colorado and we're located at 420 Corporate Circle in Golden, Colorado. St. John Properties has developed, researched and developed business parks along the US 36th Corridor for the past about 20 years, specifically in the city of Westminster. We're highly supportive of the recommendation to change the office R&amp;D low-intensity designation to employment flex. Our experience as local developers and property managers in Westminster has been that the majority of traditional office flex users in the US 36th Corridor seek rental space that offers R&amp;D lab components and they're willing to pay market rents for it. Large office buildings that do not provide an R&amp;D component have not performed well in this market. In fact, we own and operate 200,000 square feet in over seven buildings in Westminster and majority of our new leases and prospect tenants are life science and other users that split operations between traditional office space and research labs. The Westminster market is clearly seeking a pattern of employment shift that seeks to a high degree buildings that offer flex uses, including manufacturing, assembly spaces and related light industrial. I think industrial flex gets a bad rap sometimes, rightfully so in some cases. However, my company has been in the business of research and development for nearly 50 years with 170 business parks. We've learned a few things over the years, but what I'll say is real estate's a local business and we are simply not attracting the industrial flex users of yesterday in the Westminster market. Today's research and development flex buildings are highly sought after among startup companies and the full spectrum of small and large businesses. Modern flex buildings offer the ultimate flexibility for business owners without neglecting well-manicured landscapes, outdoor gathering spaces and walking trails. If the term flex industrial brings to mind a vision of smokestacks and heavy industrial parks, I'd like to direct you to the current tenant mix of one of our Westminster business parks. Our clients include dentistry groups, physical fitness training groups, engineering firms, pharmaceutical companies, environmental engineers, sales and marketing, R&amp;D laboratories, indoor and outdoor athletic companies, manufacturing, healthcare and medical businesses, government offices and traditional business offices. My opinion, in my opinion, the change of employment flex is very forward-thinking and will help ensure that startups and other users in need of flexible environment for their business find home within the city limits. Our flex industrial buildings have been privileged to maintain occupancy levels of 95% to 100% throughout the pandemic, which I attribute to good building product that meets the needs of today's business owners. Many of our clients simply would not take interest in our business parks without the R&amp;D component. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Karen Colaviti.
Hello, my name is Karen Colaviti. I've been resident of Westminster about 11 years now. With regard to the Comprehensive Plan, I know it's taken a lot of work but I also know that a lot of the ideas expressed in it were pre-pandemic and even I've called it kind of 19th and 20th century. it kind of nineteenth and twentieth century ideas. We're post-pandemic, and a lot of our businesses, a lot of our travel, a lot of our traditions have changed, and the land use, our land use guides have to change as well. This is an awfully large document, and just from a practical point of view, I think it's way too many pages to be a usable document to help people really use our land or direct our land in certain directions. It's just, it's almost lawyer-like rather than usable for people. But I do, for instance, just, it was brought up when I spoke in front of the Planning Board a month ago, that a lot of the decisions that were made with regard to this plan were done during the pandemic, and a lot of people couldn't speak about it. I, for one, attended a Harvest Festival and spoke about some of these plans, and it was, you know, public input to the point where you say what you want to say, but you know it's ignored because there's already a plan in place, an idea in mind. And I don't think this is really expressive of what the citizens really want or need right now. Even to the point of Anita brought up, you know, some, the buses from the frequent flyer. Well, I use that frequent flyer bus, but, I mean, that's practically empty now. So to say that we need to, you know, regard contracts and premises from the past, the parking lot there is empty. Our mobility needs are different post-pandemic than they were pre-pandemic. And even, like I said, going into the twenty-first century, I think this was done in comparison to the 2013 plan versus what should be really a newly created plan for this century. I brought up in a letter a lot of the changes, but the mobility, the public transport, the open space requirements for people's health, a lot of things need to be relooked at. And I'm not being critical of Andrew. I think, you know, a lot of work was done, but I just think it's based on premises from the past rather than things that really make sense after the pandemic. So I think this should be approved with a whole heck of a lot of addendums that the next city council can work with people and bring to a more legitimate life.
Thank you. Acting City Clerk Fitch, who is the next speaker?
Brock Chapman is the next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. My name is Brock Chapman. I am the CEO of Chuck Chapman Companies. And for the record, we're at Two North Cascade Avenue, Suite twelve-eighty, Colorado Springs, eight oh nine oh three. Context, we've been investors, developers, and business owners in Colorado for over fifty years as an organization. Up and down the front range has been our entire focus. Since my time is limited, I'm going to offer two key points. One general and one more specific is an example of supporting my initial comments. Generally, this new 2040 comp plan update has been underway for many, many months, with the latest major presentation to City Council in August, I believe, early August. In listening in, everything appeared to be pretty well-received there, and just want to reiterate and express the importance of predictability in the process and staying on track for this new comp plan adoption tonight or soon. It's important for continued positive investment in the city, and these investments in the city, certainly through the land use changes contemplated within the comp plan, translate to job creation, an expanding tax base, new business formation, and a strong local economy. In many ways, the 2013 comp plan is simply outdated. It's limiting new investment in the city, particularly in some key commercial areas that were mentioned in Mr. Spurgeon's presentation, including the second point I'll make, which is just by way of example, so you can see how some of those comments that are a bit high-level translate to something more specific. We are the contract purchasers and developers of a property mentioned several times. I wasn't going to mention the name, but it was mentioned several times in the presentation already, called Foster Farm. It's an eighty-acre property between I-25 and North Huron, north of Hundred Thirty-Sixth Avenue and south of the new St. Anthony's Hospital. We haven't submitted a land use application. I have no applications pending, so I believe the comments are appropriate tonight and conceptual here in nature. This property is within the I-25 focus area mentioned in the new comp plan. There are, this property's been vacant for a very long time in a very key location for the city, and there are two major reasons why this infill site hasn't been developed. And one of them is today's existing comp plan simply doesn't reflect the market realities, and particularly post-pandemic, on how people and businesses work today. Under the 2013 existing comp plan, this property, amongst many others that have the same designation, are mostly suburban mid-rise office uses across about sixty acres. If you read the newspaper, you don't have to know that there, if you've read the newspaper, you know there's a glut of office space with this type of demand in non-core business areas or downtown areas. There's been, beyond the supply and demand, there's really been a fundamental shift in the way many people are doing business today and operating, mostly away from the traditional office setting as we've known it for the past fifty years, and even to a hybrid arrangement. There's been many surveys out there that companies, large companies, have indicated they have about fifty percent more office space than they need for the future. So we know that it's not just a temporary supply and demand, it's a fundamental shift. And of course, as Mr. Andrews mentioned earlier, of course, there's been the great resignation that's occurred because of some demands to shift to the marketplace. I'd love to debate that or discuss it at some time, but again, I know my time is limited here. Regardless of personal or political philosophies, if new development is going to occur, most will agree that infill development is generally more desirable than edge-expanding greenfield development. In this particular case, for this particular property, the city went so far as to form the North Huron URA, Urban Renewal Authority, to incentivize development in this area and pay for certain infrastructure to promote the vision for development in this infill property. The city also invested five million dollars in infrastructure improvements in this area to make it ready for development many years ago. This five million dollars from the city is effectively locked within the project or the property until the property develops and can then reimburse the city for those, for that money that was put forward to incentivize development. Many developers over the years have pursued this property for obvious reasons of its location and visibility and infill nature, but ultimately saw no path forward despite the city's efforts and investments for two primary reasons, as I mentioned, one of which is the limited land uses and criteria listed in the 2013 or the old comp plan, which again focused on mid-rise-type suburban office space. So we've been working with the city for the past eighteen months on a preliminary development plan that is consistent with the direction the new comp plan, the 2040 comp plan, was headed. Besides just suburban office use, this employment flex use, which is designated for the site in the new comp plan, includes more desirable, diversified, and in-demand mix of commercial uses, still no residential. So those include things like flex office showroom, hotel as a secondary uses as a use, R&amp;D, medical office, skilled nursing and rehab, more appropriate lot coverage ratios to today's market. The existing twenty acres of retail is still intact there and is not changing, and it also takes into account the regional sewer capacity issues that are limiting that area. So those land uses within the comp plan, taking all that into consideration. Without the 2040 comp plan adoption, this property likely sits vacant for many more years as an unproductive use. Has remains with the uses the market doesn't desire for now or the foreseeable future. No new tax base from the commercial uses in this property, no new related jobs from this opportunity, no repayment of the city's five million dollar infrastructure investment in this property to spur development many years ago, and, which is now up to six million, by the way, with cost escalators, and no ability to provide desperately needed nursing, skilled nursing, and mental health services in this northern part of the city, which, by the way, is strongly supported by leaders of the St. Anthony Hospital and medical system in preliminary discussion. So we have several desirable companies interested in the location of this property, but we simply can't move forward in a meaningful way until the 2040 comp plan is adopted. So in closing, I'd respectfully make the following request. After so many months of work, public input, stakeholder input, updates, studies, et cetera, please adopt the 2040 comp plan soon, if not tonight. But I'm also not naive enough to think that the flex industrial, excuse me, flex employment is the only issue going from a high-intensity office use. So if it can't be tonight because there's other issues worked out, I hope it's done soon. And I would also genuinely ask you to please be prepared and genuinely open to, if we can't get it adopted in a timely manner, be open to making amendments to the old comp plan that stays in effect until the new comp plan can be adopted. I know that's not an ideal way to do it, but there's so many positive things that are possible, but you'll be looking at it more of an application, project-by-project basis, which I know is not the direction you want to go, but if we can't get it done another way, I hope you're open to that. I thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk? Steve Gray is the next speaker.
Fascinated by the rising podium.
We had you in mind.
Yeah, yeah, I was afraid. I can never seem to get close enough to a microphone when I have to speak, so I really appreciate someone's forward thinking. That's wonderful.
I believe that was Deputy City Manager Opie.
Well, thank you. I'm Steve Gray. I'm appearing on behalf of Tri-State Generation and Transmission Association. We're located at eleven-hundred West One Hundred Sixteenth Avenue here in Westminster. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak in favor of adoption of the 2040 comprehensive plan. As you may already know, Tri-State is a cooperative electric utility, serving primarily rural portions of the state of Colorado and parts of Wyoming, New Mexico, and the Panhandle of Nebraska. Tri-State, while it doesn't serve the city of Westminster, is a significant presence within this city. Tri-State's got over twelve hundred employees, almost half of whom report to our headquarters facility on the southwest corner of One Hundred and Sixteenth and Huron. Tri-State is active in the city of Westminster through our Adopt a Street program, or it's your Adopt a Street program, where we participate in it. We were a significant donor of materials and skilled labor on the Police Department of all of honor a couple of years back. We supported police department and first responders with pandemic supplies recently, and that's just the kind of relationship that Tri-State and the city of Westminster have, and we value that, and we see that continuing into the future. Tri-State is affected by the proposed comprehensive plan in that approximately forty acres south of our existing headquarters campus is in Tri-State ownership, and it's vacant. And it is currently designated in the office R&amp;D use category, and under the 2040 comprehensive plan, that would change, such that the east half approximately would be this employment center flex use. The west half would be, as I understand it, medium-density residential, which in our opinion is more appropriate given the surrounding uses. Employment center makes sense along the Huron Corridor. The west half of the property is almost completely swelled, surrounded on the northwest and south sides by residential use. I would add to that that the only interest we've had the property listed for since 2017, and the only interest we've had in the west half of that property's been from residential developers. We haven't had any office R&amp;D development proposals for that portion of the property. I really appreciate all the hard work that staff has put in to the development of the 2040 comprehensive plan and the regular updates that we've heard from them as it's gone forward. Tri-State's really looking forward to the certainty that the adopted comprehensive plan will provide. We've, while we're excited about the chance to move forward with development proposals that we've seen for our property, particularly the west half, because we've kind of been in a holding pattern for the last four years, while we waited for this process to be completed. And any delay of the plan just kind of keeps us in limbo. So I'm here tonight to encourage you to adopt the comprehensive plan as the 2040 comprehensive plan has proposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is an important matter for Tri-State, and that's why we're here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Acting City Clerk Fitch? The final speaker on my list is Keith Raymond. I believe Mr. Raymond spoke during normal public comments. I do not believe he's still here. I could be wrong. Is he in the lobby? He may have spoken inadvertently during the public comment portion. I have recorded that, so it will be reflected in the record. Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone who's in the room that would like to give public comment that's not signed up?
Okay, back again. Lots of questions here that need to be answered this evening. You spoke of the Planning Commission approving this. What was the vote so the public can know? In your plan, does it cover the need for additional first responders, both fire and police, and need for additional firehouses and equipment? I don't believe it truly addresses the lack of parks and open space south of Ninety-second, specifically older Westminster, the Shaw Heights area. I question the plan in that there are several pieces of property that appear to be rezoned with the new comp plan. How can we do that without a public hearing or notification, signs, letters to the residents, neighbors in those particular neighborhoods? The water portion of this is kind of a fiasco. It doesn't talk anywhere about drought. We think that this water just magically appears as going to be able to accommodate a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand people. With that, the outreach, you talked about having public outreach. I believe that it was stated in the Planning Commission that about two percent of the public, if I remember right, Andrew, that was the difference you came up with, there was only about a two percent response in the time of COVID. How can that be? How can that cover the residents' input if only two percent have the opportunity? This was during COVID. I don't think it was a fair survey, fair opportunity for people to put input. You keep talking about these stakeholders. Who are these stakeholders? Do they live here? Do they actually reside here? To me, the stakeholders are your residents that live here, own property, and do business in the city, not people with outside interests that are just coming here to make money. Those are your stakeholders. I don't believe the new plan properly addresses the lack of infrastructure moving on. I'm not sure that it really truly addresses anything about additional public schools with the I'm not sure that it really truly addresses anything about additional public schools with the influx of additional people. I don't know that you've ever checked with the postal facility, the post office, to see what impact long range this has with them. What is the the environmental impact going to be moving forward with all of this? Long term, not just tomorrow, not next week, but till 2040? By increasing the density, by increasing all of the traffic, by increasing the the volume of people? Example, the street I live on, six months ago, there was a traffic study done. 6,000 cars a day. Sounds like a lot, doesn't it? They just did a traffic study two weeks ago. Now it's 7,100 cars a day. That's a 17% increase right now. How can our streets absorb that many extra people with this new comp plan? They can't. I'm not sure how it is that the people that are deciding this comp plan within the city, staff that don't really reside here, have a stake in this city, can be making these decisions that will affect the residents of the city that live here for the next 20, 30 years. I'd like to see the crystal ball that they're using, the other gentleman back here was using about the future of this city. Where is this crystal ball you're all looking at? Can I have a look at that, please? Sorry, I'm looking at some of my notes. And I guess my final statement would be, let's not pull a ready-fire aim with this. Let's table this. Let's relook at this, rethink this, get some input from the real stakeholders in this community, the residents. So again, let's not do the ready-fire aim. Let's do it right. Okay? Let's do ready, aim, fire. Can we look at it from that aspect, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is there anyone else who has not signed up for public comment that would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. The time is
Mayor, we do have two voicemails.
Oh, I apologize. I forgot about the voicemail. Will you please pay those at this time?
Yes.
Madam Mayor and Counselors, Bill Carney, 104th and Sheridan, for Arden Hall and Interests and Hall and Purge LLC, commonly called the Hewitt-Hall and Properties. The original comp plan in 1997 was 72 pages and planned for about 8,000 acres to be developed in Westminster. Today's comp plan is 344 pages for less than 1,000 acres. The 2040 plan contemplates annexation of an additional 850 acres into the city. In 1970, the city guaranteed sufficient water for all 750 acres of our property as a condition of our agreeing to annexation. The population in Westminster was 20,000 then and grown to about 120,000 today. In 1973, we donated rights away from Big Dry Creek Sewer Line from west of US 36 to 112th east of Sheridan in exchange for the city providing sufficient capacity for maximum density of our properties and rights to connect. After 50 years, 100,000 increase in population, those commitments still need to be honored, satisfied, and modeled into utility plans before any further annexations. Our property has been known as a hall and property since 1955 when it was purchased. Referring to it as a Church Ranch focus area now makes no sense. Neither Mr. McKay or Church Ranch has ever had an interest in our property nor had any authority to plan its future development. Please return to designating our land as the hall and property. Another concern is the manner in which the city has weaponized the label of parks, open space, and public quasi-public designations to limit the development of adjoining land. The city buys, condemns, and sells internally and externally parcels of land designated as open space for public quasity as the city sees fit with no notice or concern with the impact that designation will have on the adjoining property owners. It allows staff broad authority to limit development. Giving this arbitrary power to unelected staff members should not be allowed. Saying it can be appealed to city council may be correct, but our buyers have to spend a minimum of $250,000 of bureaucratic red tape to get to city council. A recent example is the northwest corner of 104th and Sheridan, which a planning director would not support as commercial use as too close, in her words, to the city's world-class recreation center. In 1983, the city carved out this site for commercial use in order to buy a less expensive configuration of 70 acres for the park. Never in the court testimony, the city says the park would limit the use of the commercially zone remaining seven acres. Our other two commercial tracks along Sheridan are likewise limited in their ability to be developed by this language due to their proximity to parks, open space, or even the golf course, which we donated the land. In the agenda memorandum for the golf course development dated September 28, 1992, under Plan Description Number Five, provide added value to the non-golf course land to compensate the landowners for the value of the land dedicated to the city for the course. How can this objective be met with a limiting language of the comp plan for parks, open space, and quasi-public use? We propose added language to the adopting ordinance. Nothing in the city's revised 2040 comprehensive plan is intended to, or shall it, alter any land uses, zoning, previous agreements regarding water, sewer, access, or any other commitments or agreements previously made by the city with any property owner. We ask that the city council include this language in its adopting ordinance so there's no confusion amongst staff, the public, or future city council members about the commitments that have already been made to the Hall and Property. Finally, what is the rush to get this revised plan adopted within mere days of an election? The last draft was released September 2. It went to Planning Commission September 14, and the city sought our discussion a week later on September 21. Staff says that anyone that could burden the new council with this complicated manner is actually putting a heavier yoke on the new council. There are less than 1,000 acres left to be developed in Westminster. I bet the new council can get up to speed in a short period of time. Thank you for your consideration. Good night.
Karen Ray, 460 Shaw Boulevard, Westminster. This is in regards to the Comprehensive Plan 2040. I've read through the Comprehensive Plan 2040 provided to council tonight and find flaw in the conclusions that are being made. With only 1,100 acres of land left in the city which have not been built out, this comprehensive plan is missing the opportunity to serve the community. It misses an opportunity to provide equal access to open space and parks to underserved communities. It continues on a course of undermining the purpose of the city code 11.68 by not mandating a requirement of minimum public land dedication on new development be enforced. It reinforces what has been de facto redlining in the city, underserving the most vulnerable populations, denying equal access to healthy, open space. The plan continues on a course of adding more urban heat islands in an era where climate change is affecting quality of life and where what we do today impacts future generations. The comprehensive plan comes before the water supply plan, which has not been vetted and adopted yet. The water supply plan says climate change is not a factor in the city's long-range view, contradicting what science says. How is it possible that Westminster is an exception to climate change? Study after study proves the less affluent the population, the more impacted by climate change. A new EPA analysis released on September 2 shows that the most severe harms from climate change fall disproportionately upon underserved communities. It is a public health crisis. There is only one sentence in the entire document that recognizes the growing Latino community and has no mention of the African-American, Asian-American, Pacific Islander, or Indigenous populations. There is nowhere in the comp plan that concretely addresses the unequal access to open space and parks, in particular in the older south part of the city. The south part of Westminster is where there is the highest number of people of color, the area of the city with the lowest median income, and where the highest percentage of the city's senior population lives. Yet, this area has the lowest percentage of parks. For example, in the city boundaries of Shaw Heights, only 27% of children are within a 10-minute walk of a park. In the new transition area called, quote, Westminster Heights, the plan even uses a schematic from the uplands developer and their city-submitted proposal to depict the concept of the large farm parcel at 84th and Federal, ignoring the pleas from the surrounding community on what should be done with the land to serve the community to mandate maximum preservation, not maximum building heights and density. Here, there's an opportunity to preserve for the community and for future generations of public open space. Instead, the plan starts with business, not the community. It continues the decades of ignoring and redlining the south end of the city. The Westminster Heights area is envisioned to locate residential densities along the east side of Federal Boulevard to help support transit lines and employment development at the St. Anthony's campus, is what the report says. It's over a two-mile walk to the Beeline and over three miles to the Park and Ride on Sheridan, and there is only one bus that runs along Federal. This is not a transit-oriented area. The area to the east of the farm is blighted and derelict commercial space, and the neglected old St. Anthony's Hospital sits there. While there is a soundbite about something called an agrahood, it completely misses what could and must happen to this land if there is truly the will to put community before private business interests. Over the past year, Westminster has been recognized as having the third highest number of apartments built outside of Denver. Is this really the vision the city wants? I ask the city council not to approve this plan as it stands. Return this to staff. A study and concrete proposals on how to address the inequity in open space access needs to be presented with serving the community as the starting point. The water supply plan must be vetted before the comprehensive plan. I believe this comp plan as it stands fails
Fitch, now I'm going to open it up. The time is 9:01. Public comments have ended. I'm going to ask my colleagues on council if they have any questions for staff. Mr. Spurgeon?
Do I get to respond to those?
Correct. Absolutely. If you'd like to go first, oftentimes council is kind of triggered by what they hear and want to ask questions of it. But if you'd like to address them proactively, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Just just a few things. You know, we do think we're being mindful of what happened with the pandemic. And that was why the plan essentially was put on pause last year while we revisited some of these topics, particularly the employment land use was one of those significant changes as we look towards a post-pandemic future and the help from the CU Leeds School that helped us with the Economic Resilience Chapter. We are following, the transportation elements do follow what's in the Transportation Mobility Plan. We're trying to be consistent with that. In fact, the two plans being consistent with each other is one of the criteria for approving the plan. So I can't bring to you a plan that's different than one you've already adopted on that other topic. The planning commission vote was five to two. I believe it's described in the agenda memo. The two in opposition, one was concerned about the water supply plan findings. The other did not agree with the multimodal provisions in the Transportation Chapter envisioned zero. Again, I'm trying to follow the Transportation Mobility Plan, which this council adopted in August. So that was a little bit of a disconnect there. The plan actually does address police and fire department staffing. That's on page 137 of the plan. We got very helpful input from both of our public safety departments and appreciate it. This plan does have a statement about the need for parkland south of 92nd Avenue. That's not something found in our current comprehensive plan. That's on page 88. The plan does not rezone any property. That's something city council would do at a later time, separate action. When we bring projects to you, there's criteria of approval for those. Comprehensive plan compliance is one of the 10 criteria, but there's also nine other criteria that that may be used to evaluate the merits of a project and whether it's something that would be supported or not supported. The water supply plan is a separate plan, so it's not fully addressed in the in the comprehensive plan. We do talk about it at a high level, but it is a separate plan. That plan was completed earlier this year. The presentation to city council on March 15 was the completion of that plan. That's an attachment eight here. I don't recall ever using the word 2%. I believe what I told planning commission was we directly interacted with 2085 Westminster residents, and we were available for 75,000 through events. The outreach began in 2018. The bulk of our outreach was actually in 2019, prior to the pandemic. We did offer a meeting in a box and online activities during the pandemic, but the bulk of our in-person activities were in 2019. The 32 stakeholders that were interviewed, that's actually listed on Romanate III in the acknowledgements part of of the plan. That's there's there's no secrets who those stakeholders are. It's listed in the plan for anyone to consult. We did talk to all three school districts, and they did help us with the policies in the plan. That's on page 137. Specifically, Westminster Public Schools offered actually some additional statements they thought were appropriate to include in the plan. We did not send the post office copy of the comprehensive plan. I'd be very surprised if they responded to such a document. They are given subdivision plats, so they do see the addressing process and how that works. We do consider the environmental impact, the addition of the climate, cross-cutting icon, and health and other things are new with this comprehensive plan. Mr. Carney has long been a partner with this community, and a lot of great things have happened in Westminster as a result of working with him as a major landowner. He does bring up good points relative to prior agreements that are in place with the city to the extent that there's any rights with those agreements. The appropriate forum to consider those is with future preliminary development plans and official development plans as as uses are proposed. The comprehensive plan is not really the right forum to address contractual obligations if they do exist at all. And I believe we've had extensive discussion with council on Mr. Carney's proposals. I remember being here till 1:00 in the morning with 112th and Sheridan when staff was not supporting multifamily there. And then more recently, the 105th and Sheridan gas station proposal was before city council, actually earlier this year. And and Ms. Ray has been someone we've talked to a lot. I greatly admire her passion in the community and the way she's been able to compile information into a usable way that it's explainable. She does note concerns for parks and open space in the southern part of the city. We do share that concern. That's why we do mention on page 88 and on page 42, the need for additional parkland in that part of the city. We do not designate private property for parks and open space, though. That would be a taking which would be illegal. So the problem is, most of the area down there is in unincorporated Adams County. It's not even in the city. But in the city, there's very few sites left. The plan does acknowledge the need for those additional parks and open space facilities. However, we will work with the Parks Recreation Library's planning process to identify how that might be brought forward and also talk to our partners with Adams County, Island Hills Parks Recreation District, who also serve the unincorporated county. Again, the water supply plan is completed. There's, I know there seems to be some question on that, but that is fait accompli. We do have staff here in the room that can talk to the water supply plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spurgeon, for taking such good notes of the questions that came up during the public comment. And now like to open it up to my colleagues on council, Mayor Protim Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, for the presentation and everybody who's brought forward your thoughts on the plan. A couple of things that I, and I know this, I asked about some of these things before, and I tried to dig through the plan and understand if the answers were in there. and I tried to dig through the plan and understand if the answers were in there, and I'm just not following. One of the things I brought up before was, how big are we going to be? And I do think that directly impacts my view on both the water plan as well as the comprehensive land use plan. There's still the section in there that talks about the forecast what Dr. Cog thinks we're going to be. But for me, I really do want an actual number of how big does this plan allow us to be versus how big the 2013 plan allowed us to be. Understanding that doesn't mean that we have to be that big, but it would be good to understand how big this allows us to be and do we have water to support that at the height. Those are two things that really need to know before I can make up my mind on the plan.
It'll work better if I turn the button on. So I personally buy population to be a fascinating topic. So it was interesting, you know, looking at city's history and how it's grown over the years, and the growth rate is somewhat slowing now as compared to earlier decades. And really, what we're looking for with the plan is trends. Not getting hung up on specific numbers, but you know, the increasing seniors, the Latinx population, smaller household sizes. And what do these trends mean for land use? There was a updated data dump from the census on September 30th. I have not spent much time looking at that. I do know that new data is out. Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, and the State Demographer are still using 2019 numbers, if you look at their website. So I personally have been hoping to get better census data so that we can actually relate to those numbers rather than the estimates. Dr. Cog does forecast 151,200 people by year 2050. We don't think that number's right. The plan actually has a statement on page 20. "Understanding that Westminster is largely built out, coupled with utility and site constraints and housing trends indicating residential population estimates are becoming less reliable, therefore, population growth and housing assumptions will need to be regularly evaluated and adjusted downward as appropriate." The existing comprehensive plan, the 2013 plan, did predict a 2035 population of 135,000. With this plan, it would not be much difference since we're not increasing residential densities at hardly any locations. What I would suggest is that we come back to council with a future item when we have more of that census data available to report on what we think that future number will be. We did work with the Public Works and Utility Staff on the water supply plan with a series of scenarios. So the current comprehensive plan planned for one scenario, which is a table in Chapter 2 of the current comprehensive plan. We went through really 1,000 different iterations to see what could happen. And the land use changes went from no change at all to 7% of the city's land changing, getting more dense. We're going with the more conservative 1% change. But my understanding, working with our counterparts in Public Works, is there is confidence that the water supply can support this plan.
And I guess that's where the rub comes in for me. And I understand that we went through kind of the conservation piece of it. But in my time on council, there has been talk that there wasn't, not talk, there were statements made that the 2013 plan was overplanned for water. So if this is bigger mildly, but still bigger, that's the part that doesn't rectify for me, even though, understanding that, you know, the conservation component of it. I do think it's an interesting topic because as far as like the census data and what we anticipate it's going to be is interesting. However, it doesn't change the amount of landmass we have or how big a building's going to be and how many people can fit in it. I know it's not an exact science, but I think it's fair to at least share some of that and see how you guys might be able to address my concerns. And one other thing that I did have a question about, some of the speakers talked about some of these different plaits that in their initial statements made it sound like if this didn't pass, that, you know, they weren't going to be able to move property or have it developed. But then they kind of did answer part of what my thinking was, and I'd like to have you weigh in on it. As far as any of those parcels, if they had a potential use for that, there's nothing to stop any developer at this point, if they have a potential developer to come forward and ask for a comprehensive land use change, correct?
That's correct. They could do that. They'd be doing the work on their own and with the added time of, those are typically four- to six-month processes.
But that's kind of the standard of what we've seen today. Like, so, I mean, so it's not unheard of. So it's not stopping them from developing. It's just extra work to be able to develop their property, is what you're saying, correct?
With these particular representatives here tonight, yeah, they could probably be, we could probably work with them on a comprehensive plan amendment. But if, when we bring forward the plan for evaluation, we'd still be using the old plan without any of the new guidance on the city's economic resilience and the policies in Chapter 6. So it would be harder to justify and meet the criteria for approving a comprehensive plan amendment.
All right. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Mr. Spurgeon and Mr. Andrews, with your permission, I'd like to have Ms. Borgers come up to talk about the issue of water. It's come up multiple times, and it's in, it's in Attachment 8, but I think it might be helpful because it does detail the exact water gap that was from the 2013 plan and then kind of evaluates the methodology for looking at how water would be impacted with this plan. And you can actually move the whole thing down.
Can lower it. I was watching that happen earlier. I'm the opposite direction, though.
This is why we have custom podiums.
Right. No, I appreciate the question and the opportunity to talk about water supply for just a minute since it is such an important part of the plan. Sarah Borgers and the Water Resources and Quality Manager, and we have worked very closely. Andrew Spurgeon and our team have worked very closely to make sure that this comprehensive plan and the water supply plan are very closely linked. As Andrew mentioned, we ran a number of different scenarios, which is a little different than what we did in the 2013. So in 2013, we ran one scenario with one set of demand numbers and one set of supply numbers. And that worked fine, but we have a lot more capability today than we did in the past. And so in this case, we ran 4 million different scenarios to get a full range of what possible futures might look like. So it doesn't come out with one nice, neat answer, which is unfortunate because that makes it a lot easier to talk about. But it does give us a much better understanding about the types of things that we might see in the future. So will we experience drought in different ways? How will different developments impact our water supply? How does conservation impact our water supply? And so we have this much broader understanding of what possible futures might look like. Generally speaking, the 2013 plan and the results of that fell generally within the numbers that we found from this analysis. But we also have this kind of broader understanding now. In this particular land use map, the water supply can support, and that's predicated on a number of things. And as you mentioned, Mayor Protem, conservation is definitely one of those big components of that. Since we are largely built out, what our current customers do really does matter in terms of what our ultimate water supply will be. There's anything else you'd like me to address? I think that's.
I think, to be fair, and I appreciate the mayor bringing it up. I have read through this, and I have sat through these meetings. And I guess the fact that there are so many variables, I appreciate the hard work on it, but it still, I mean, it's not solid to me. If you talk to people who were here in 2013, they were told that we had water. Couple of years later, it looked like we didn't because of the modeling we're doing. Couple of years later, now the modeling looks good. So it's not, I don't say that at all to slight any work that you guys have done. I appreciate the work. It's just, I'm trying to process through it. And so every time we talk, it helps a little bit. But it's still just, I mean, I guess it is just going to be kind of a moving target ongoing. But it still doesn't, it makes me uneasy with where this is going. So, but I appreciate you working on clarity for us.
Sure. I just want to further clarify that. It wasn't that the new models determined that there was a water gap from 2013. That was known at that time. The methodology there was just using very finite variables, like specific variables. Now, looking at it, we're doing multi-scenario planning is the difference. But in the evaluation from the previous comp plan, there was a known water gap.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, do you have any additional questions?
No.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate the presentation tonight. I appreciate the comments from the public regarding the plan as well. I have a few questions. First of all, I wanted to compliment you on making sure that this plan was shared in multiple languages. I appreciate that really being considered of different populations and their needs. So thank you. You mentioned that there was a development that would come under, would continue to come under the 2013 plan. Is it just one developer, or is it several, or do we have a list somewhere?
It would be anything that's filed as site-specific development plan under state law. The only one that I'm aware of is the Uplands Project. Looking at my colleague John McConnell to see if he's aware of any others. No?
Okay. And you said that, I guess one of my concerns is that, so to me, a comp plan should actually be somewhat live. It should be flexible and something that we can adjust as needed. Do we have that built in somewhere that we can change this as we need to to adapt to our ever-changing environment? I think that's one thing COVID did teach us is that we live in a very changeable environment, and we need to make sure that we're moving with that. Is that something we can do?
Absolutely. The intent is that it's a living document. Obviously, there's an amendment process. Council seemed amendments at various times. But with this, with this new plan, what we're proposing is a biennial reporting process where we would more proactively identify, you know, the progress we're making. Appendix Z has some indicators where we'll actually track different metrics to be able to report back and, again, be more proactive if we need to change course of the plan or something is failing, looking at that ahead of time. So it is intended to be a living document.
Okay. And I did see your efforts in 2019, trying to engage the public. I went to the Harvest Festival. I went to some meetings down at the MAC. I went to some meetings in historic Westminster. So I did recognize those efforts. I did see that you did some things over COVID as well, online. So I appreciated that, trying to engage. And I think that it would be important to continue that engagement as we, especially since it is something that we can change as time goes on. I also wanted to say that when I first read this, I kind of questioned whether or not we had enough board and commission interaction because I see the boards and commissions as places where we have very active and engaged residents who very often can give us some feedback as a council as well. And I appreciate the note that it was a 5-2 vote and specifically why the two commissioners were in dissent. But what I saw, what your presentation showed me, because you were actually able to point out and answer my question, which was that you visited the Youth Advisory Board. I saw the Planning Commission. You mentioned Parks and Recreation. You mentioned that you engaged the schools, the several nonprofits and several businesses as well as residents. So I was actually very impressed with how many different entities you were able to engage with. But again, I hope that will continue as we move forward. So those are all my questions and points that I wanted to make tonight. So thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a large document. And for me, who generally likes executive summaries on everything, this gives the opportunity for both, so I appreciate that with the appendices and the references in here. So we can dig deep into where this came from and where it flowed. So, you know, this is too important of a plan to be 50 pages long. So I think we find a balance there. And if my colleagues recall, in our September meeting, I had a great number of questions and tabs in my book. But with that said, I, for full disclosure, sent an email to my colleagues this week, or last week, for consideration of tabling the vote tonight. Continue the presentation so we can learn more about it because personally, this year, having done the water plan, the mobility plan, the sustainability plan, COVID replanning, it has been a bit much. And I was hoping for additional time to have more questions. I never want to slow business down. I know what the cost of that is. I understand that very directly. But I want to make sure that we have a plan that's going to serve us well and still be living through 2040. And to me, a few more weeks. Unfortunately, there's an election in there that seems to make it political rather than doing the right thing with the right amount of time. And so I also, I continue now to my colleagues to ask them to consider to table it tonight so that we don't have to have a vote one way or the other, but we can consider and continue to ask questions. So thank you.
Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a good document, and you can tell a lot of hard work went into this. And along with Counselor Scully, I was out and about. I think we all were. We saw you doing your public outreach. We bumped into you at the Latino Festival, Harvest Festival, with tons of people participating. So I commend you for that. I think we did have a lot of participation in this, drafting this plan. One of the things that would concern me about putting a delay on it, I respect what you're saying, Counselor Seymour, but one of the things that would concern me is predictability. Businesses need to be, we need to be predictable in how we're operating. And I hate to see this kind of prolonged and delayed. If businesses have already started kind of looking at this and adjusting to this plan, I would be concerned with that. I think, I think a delay might send the wrong message. So I, you know, we've had the plan since April 1st, the draft of it, over six months. I think, from my perspective, I'm ready, excuse me, I'm ready to move forward on it. I think it's a good plan. A lot of good work went into it. So in all due respect, I hear what you're saying, and I respect what you're saying. But I think we, this is the council who's been with this plan from the very beginning. And I think we should be the ones, this council should be the ones to make the call on it, and we ought to approve this and move forward with it. It's our, our Planning Commission moved on it. We've seen it. We've had multiple, multiple discussions. I guess I'm a little bit opposite where I think a delay might not be send the right message. With that said, I want to ask a couple of quick questions, too, though, if I can, for Mr. Spurgeon. I think what I'm hearing, what I'm reading here is, overall, on average, this plan actually reduces density if you take the overall plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then can you tell me a little more about, there's really great work with building our neighborhoods and having thriving neighborhoods is one of our visions that we all talk about a lot. There's a great chapter in this plan on that. Can you talk a little bit about neighborhood units and why that's a good thing? There's a section in here, but just for the public record, what is that and why is it important? Because I, for me, it stood out as a really important part of the plan. Can you just speak, maybe just in a nutshell, why that's a good thing?
Well, that was really, that was really a result of our public input and what we heard from the community. We had several interactive exercises where people indicated a desire to maintain neighborhoods that are primarily lower density residential but with access to parks, services, and conveniences to fulfill their daily needs. So this plan proposes the neighborhood unit concept, which is identified in Chapters 3 and Chapter 7, as a way for when we have development proposals to really consider the context. Because right now, when we bring development proposals to you or to the Planning Commission, you know, we sort of talk about the land use and various code considerations. But we wanted to have more of a lens for how does it fit into a neighborhood? Is it supporting the neighborhood? Is it not supporting the neighborhood? Is the supporting transportation available? Are daily services available as we add potentially more residential units into an area? Are the parks connections there? So that was really the purpose, really to take consideration of development out of that sort of silo and put it into this neighborhood planning lens.
Well said. I like it a lot. It really stood out as an important.
I, that really stood out as an important part of this plan for me, that appealed to me a lot. It is something new. I mean, from the 2013, doing it this way is a new concept, and the public weighed in on that and liked it. I like it. I think it makes a lot of sense. So I commend you for that. Taking, we have mature neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods that, we're a city, we have mature neighborhoods. And you're taking kind of a planning neighborhood lens to this effort. And I appreciate that a lot. I think that's important as we continue to mature, as our city ages. Those are my, those are my questions. Can I, one last question, I could add one more. What are best practices for updating plans like this? What is a typical, what, you know, in your profession, planning, what do you typically like to do as far as updating? And what, how many years between plans is typical or good?
Well, typically, you look roughly every five to six years. It obviously depends on if a community is going through a lot of change, or if it's more stable. In our case, we do look to the Denver Regional Council of Governments, because us having plans that are in accordance with their planning horizon helps us be eligible for their various funding programs. So our existing comprehensive plan was aligned with the previous Dr. Cog Metrovision 2035. They are now moved to a 2040. So the idea with this comprehensive plan is to put us in alignment with Denver Regional Council of Governments and continue to be, having those best practices and being eligible for future funding and participation and some of their technical services and other things they do for municipalities.
Okay, good. Thank you for that answer. That makes a lot of sense to me. And that's, that's another reason I would not want us to delay too much longer on the plan, because we're already at the outer edges of being what are considered best practices in planning. So I want us to abide by best practice as much as possible. So I, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. And thank you, staff, for your efforts with the long comprehensive plan. Out of transparency, I sent an email to our council, all of council members, expressing similar thoughts as Counselor Seymour to table this vote. And as, as we reviewed the last time in August, I asked a lot of questions, but I also had some concerns on the outreach to our residents. We're putting together not just a plan for us, but for our residents, which is their plan, our plan that we're implementing, right? And with a lot of information that you presented to us, there is quite a bit, quite a bit of documents and quite a bit of overlapping information and how it translates to the comprehensive plan. And I very much appreciate the ability to fully understand those cross, not only the cross-cutting topics, but how each of the plans that we've worked on throughout the year relates to this document. And I, I think more time is needed to that. It's a long 20-year plan that we're instituting. And it does concern me that we are looking at a five-two vote on a Planning Commission that even residents are not unanimous in agreeing to move this forward unanimously. So that's part of my hesitation. Not that there's not good things in this document. I would just like to honestly have more time to fully vet all of the information and all the details. And I, I appreciate, Mayor, that, I remember you telling us council members that there should never be a time where we feel pressured to make a vote, and that we should have enough conversation and time to vet the information. And I'm just not there yet, and it can be, I would just like more.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I am not in favor of tabling this tonight. I think that we're ready to move forward, and I echo much of what Counselor Vols said. I appreciate your input. So I will be a yes vote on this tonight.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. I, you know, some of the speakers mentioned that they didn't think that there was enough focus on equity or various populations within this comprehensive plan. I did find that we put a new emphasis on equity, and I was wondering if you could take a moment to talk about that.
As you all have noted, it is a big document. So, so first of all, the, the plan talks about equity, first of all, to align with the other Westminster Forward plans, but also really being mindful of diversity and inclusion, as supported by our city's vision statement. When, when, in developing the plan, we, we looked at equity, in terms, how do we get, how do we get the right people to the table? So that was why we sought out those target audiences, the Youth Advisory Panel. Spending half of us Saturday at the Mung Community Garden, they gave me a very unusual cucumber. You need to put sugar on it to eat it. And again, some of those other audiences, just to make sure that they had a voice at the table. And so the plan recognizes that, and then introduces the equity concepts in other places, such as the cost of service and infrastructure policies, as well as the need to bridge the digital divide. So that's something we were very mindful of. I don't think the comprehensive plan necessarily fully addresses it, but I think the comprehensive plan, when we look towards implementation and work with the partner plans, has the potential to really make strides in that arena.
How do you respond to Ms. Reyes' concern that this is furthering redlining?
I, I don't believe that's the case in terms of how redlining was done with mortgages historically. The plan recognizes the need for housing diversity. The plan has new policy language on affordable housing, senior housing, special needs housing that is not something addressed in our existing comprehensive plan. The plan does, quite frankly, recognize the lack of equitable access to parks. And that's something that needs to be addressed, so that would be an implementation item for that part of the city. So I don't believe the plan continues any tradition of redlining to the extent there was. Many of, many of the people that have made those comments actually live in Adams County, not in the city. I cannot speak to what Adams County's policies are on that.
Correct. I would think that, an illustrative point, part of the plan is the call-out that there needs to be a 25 to 30-acre park, something equivalent to the size of Westfield Village south of 92nd Avenue, as one of the call-outs. That was part of the portion, the health, wellness, and community services. I know you detailed that in your initial statements, but do you mind taking a moment to kind of go over how this was incorporated in this plan and missing in 2013?
Sure. So, and I have something that if we do bring this back at a later time, the, one thing we might be able to do, if it helps council, is actually code the policies to show what's carried over versus what's new. So I have my own little notes here that do that. But absolutely, the, the goal, the goal in Chapter 5 relative to wellness and healthy living, that is, and the three policies under that are all new with this plan. Recognizing, well, first of all, taking the lead from some of the ideas that came from the Sustainability Plan, but improving access to healthy foods and opportunities for urban agriculture are new with this plan. Working with public safety, there is some new content there, thinking about environmental and design, and how that's a factor in new developments. And then, again, thinking about some of the economic development chapter. There's new content in regards to, let me look at Chapter 6 now, in regard to workforce development, education system. This is not really addressed in our existing comprehensive plan. And thinking about, again, special needs housing and some of those other things are not really addressed in the existing plan.
Thank you. I'm going to shift into a statement. I first want to, I actually responded to Counselor Seymour's request, both in person and then in writing to the entire council. I, I respect that Mr. Seymour's desire to be fully informed before taking a vote. However, I feel we've been given ample opportunity to fully immerse ourselves in this proposed plan. This has been a three-year process. We, you know, this council has been part of this three-year process, starting, you know, with an enormous amount of community outreach. I believe you said it was over 2,000 individuals that have given into, have given input into this plan. 23, excuse me, 23 different stakeholder meetings, was that correct? Or 21? 21 stakeholder meetings. Six times that this has come to the city council. I believe you said four since November of last year. Okay? So we, we've had a lot of information. We've had this plan, minus some amendments that came to us in August, but we've had the bulk of this plan since April, so that is six months. So I'm going to read my statement, but my concern is eventually, ultimately, we are elected to vote and make policy decisions. And I have said, we need to be able to take the time we need, which is why we slowed things down during COVID and did not push the process forward, because we were supposed to vote for this last year. But we wanted to slow it down, see how the world changed with COVID, and we folded those changes into this plan. But it seems illogical to me to somehow think, waiting a few weeks after an election, that somehow that new council would be brought up to speed in a matter of weeks and what this council couldn't feel comfortable voting on in six months? It doesn't make logical sense to me. We have a lot of stakeholders that spent time and energy meeting with us in good faith that we were going to honor the process and the timeline that we laid out. We, as a council, heard this timeline and process multiple times. It was not until Wednesday of this week that we discussed a table and a delay. And I have to say, I'm somewhat offended to bring up that politics were brought up, because honestly, pushing it past the election feels more like playing politics to me. You know, I just don't feel comfortable deferring and discounting all of our institutional knowledge. There were a lot of major decisions that we've made as a group that we've recognized we can't defer until after the election, because we're the council that understands that, you know, those situations intimately. This is no different to me. You know, I, I would ask each of you, and I'd ask you respectfully, to really consider our charge to do this on our watch. I don't think you can underestimate how much information we gleaned over those three years, over those six presentations, you know, the six months that we had to read this document. So I'm going to, I would like to see this passed tonight. It does not make logical sense to me that a new council, who has not been part of these discussions, would get up to speed faster than we were able to get into in six months. So that's, that's where I'm at with it. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Okay. Mr. Andrews or Mr. Spurgeon, do you have any closing comments?
I guess I'll just say that, you know, our recommendation is to approve the plan as outlined in the agenda memo and in our presentation. We, we do, we did benefit from a lot of input from the city council, and I really appreciate the guidance that you all provided and the very astute questions that were asked. It really helped me become a better planner, so I'm grateful for the experience.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. At this time, council, I am going to take a motion. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 34 on first reading to approve the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, based on a finding that the plan meets the criteria established in Section 11-3-2 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Vols.
A second motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Is, are there any comments from council? Well, I'm going to make a comment. I'm sorry, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you to Jody and Mr. Andrews and Mr. Spurgeon and staff for your work on this. I'd say that your comments go both ways. Certainly learned a lot through this process, and I do think that the plan is better because of it. And I think if the plan, that was some tweaking I could get behind, but I'm not there right now. And a lot of it is around that water thing. And I will say that I've asked that, that water question, and the way I'm looking to get it answered as far as, how big can we be? And I'm just not comfortable with the answer that we're getting. We talk a lot about Dr. Cog and how we line up with that. I understand the reasons why. But at the end of the day, I was elected to represent this community, and so I'm just not comfortable at this point. Granted, I don't want it to go without being said that there's a lot of good stuff that I think in the future there will be a plan that applies a lot of the work that you've done. But tonight, I will be a no vote.
So tonight, I'll be voting yes, and the reasons I'll be voting yes were articulated very well by Mr. Spurgeon and by some of my colleagues. I appreciate that the new comprehensive plan allows us to look at compatibility with existing neighborhoods. That's been something that, since I've been on council, has been really brought to us as an issue that, of concern. And so making sure the fit, the scale, and the interaction with the existing neighborhoods is something that is compatible, is something that I enjoy. I appreciate the focus going from economic development and just recruitment and retention to really helping small businesses, local businesses, entrepreneurship. And, you know, economic resiliency is something that I think is quite improved in this plan. The fact that this is a de-zoning, or a lower density than the 2013 plan is something that I think we should consider. And I don't think that because we've used multi-scenario water modeling and get an idea of the extremes of what we could face and likelihood what we'll face with our water supply plan is a detriment. I think it shows that we understand exactly, or not exactly, that we understand the tolerance of our ability to meet this plan. I also believe the section on health, wellness, and community services really allows us to more holistically use this plan to meet the needs of our community and ensure that everybody has access to a high quality of life. I also want to vote on this, because I do want to honor all of the stakeholders and residents who participated in it. And I think we need to follow our process. I think we have given a lot of time and opportunity to consider this, and I'm ready to vote tonight. I would like to understand, and I, what would be the implications of this, if this were to not be passed tonight?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I think what, depending on, listening to the comments provided by the city council, pending on the outcome of a vote passed or not, the first reading of the comprehensive plan, I think we would take under advisement and bring it back in effect in some period of time after the council has had a chance to consider. I think it sounds like it would likely be after that first week of November. Then we, we quite likely will be facing a different composition of our city council, and that may mean more intense briefings to bring the new city council up to speed. I would think after tonight, we would turn to staff to develop a revised plan for adoption. But I think we would, we would probably be pushing towards having the 2013 plan in effect for almost 10 years at that point, that we might be able to see the adoption of a new replacement or updated plan. And I think the consequence of that would also be an increased number of comprehensive plan amendments brought forward to the new city council to address the old or the current plan. So a short answer would be staff would need to retool in terms of how, how much would be required to reengage with the new, with the new city council, and then work with that council to work back towards the finishing date of updating the plan.
And if that were to happen, we lose And if that were to happen, we lose some of the benefits of the coordinated planning. So if we have to rely on comp plan changes, since they're one-off instead of part of a coordinated, does that impact, does that have a cascading impact on all of our plans, like our infrastructure and?
I, I would say that we, I wouldn't have the benefit enough of adopted plan, knowing that this is truly city council policy. So we continue to reference the old plan, but always with that degree of uncertainty, you know, does this still, is this still practical or still sensitive to our current needs? We would lose confidence in it. Also, again, this plan was developed in accordance with the other Westminster Forward plans, so that alignment wouldn't be there. You know, the Implementation Action Plan, which is one of the attachments, there's 103 follow-up actions we think need to be done to actually implement this plan. So those would be on hold, and we would, I guess, begin study sessions with the new council to find out what they want to see in a comprehensive plan, because I don't anticipate we could just bring it in and adopt it with the new council.
Can someone remind me the date that the 2013 plan was adopted?
It was November 11th, 2013, which was actually the day the council, the, the new council in 2013 took office.
Correct. It was the last action of the outgoing council. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I add a clarification on that? I should provide this option for the city council to discuss, and that is that if council desired a short delay, so a continuance of this to a, to a date certain, that, that could be done on October 21st, to allow first reading on October 21st, I'm sorry, October 25th for the first reading, which would then be able to bring back on second reading to November 8th, which would be the last meeting of this seated council before the new council would, would seat. So there is that option for the council to consider tonight. I should have mentioned that earlier, but listening to this question affected the earlier plan. That is certainly an option for council tonight if they desire it.
I would poll my council and ask them if that would give them enough time, or if their true intention is to wait till after the election. I'll start with Counselor Seymour. Would you be willing to table it to that date?
Madam Mayor, thanks for bringing that up and the option. Since it is exclusively an issue of time for me, I would be, feel comfortable with tabling to those dates. Those, that is what I need is more time.
Okay. Mayor Protam?
I didn't ask to table. It was a no. However, if we can get more clarity around what I asked about, I'd be happy to look it over and reweigh my decision if that's what the council does.
Okay. And Counselor Smith?
Yes, I don't think that pushing it past an election was ever an option. Knowing that we have a, a different option is, that it's available, is appreciated. So yeah, never was political.
All right. With that being said, if we can do it prior to the election, I would be fine with tabling this until a date certain. So I would be willing to amend my motion.
Madam Mayor, if I could, Dave Franklin, City Attorney, I think if that's the desire of council, procedurally, a couple of things would have to happen. The, the motion and that second would need to agree to changing the motion. And I would recommend not tabling, but specifically continuing to a date certain. That way, all the folks that are in attendance tonight and listening remotely will have notice of the fact that this will be considered on October 25th. If that's the date that council intends to revisit this or continue these discussions too.
Okay. Counselor Scully, would you be willing to continue the motion to a date certain?
I would, ma'am.
With, of, of October 25th?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Vols, would you agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay. We now have a motion to continue to a date certain. We have a second. Are there any comments or questions or concerns on this item? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully?
Yes, now I'm unclear on when I'm voting.
To continue this to October 25th?
Yes, ma'am. My answer is yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The amended motion to continue this to date certain passes 6-0. Thank you so much. The next item before us is Item 10B. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 35 on first reading, setting the salary for Presiding Municipal Court Judge Jason Longtime for 2022.
Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is Item B2. Can I get Counselor Scully to complete the motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with Jason Longtime for his services as Presiding Municipal Court Judge for 2022 with an effective date of January 1, 2022, and an automatic renewal for 2023, 2024, and 2025, unless terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Is there a comments, questions, or concern? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Sorry.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Counselors Bill Number 30, uh, sorry, Counselors Bill Number 36. Is there a motion? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 36 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute an economic development assistance agreement with Bulker USA for the development of 8955 Marshall Court in a form that is substantial the same as the form presented.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to point out this economic development is to move one of the world's leading manufacturers of knives in, assist them in their showroom and offices here in the city. Basically, the return on this is, is they're going to be, just in fees, spending about $119,000 on the front end. This is fees only, and so we're waiving part of that. They look at bringing approximately 15 jobs and almost $1 million worth of payroll as a primary employer to our city, and they are very excited to be a part of the Westminster community, so I'll be supporting this this evening.
Thank you so much. And I know Mr. Palmer had asked a question about the exact amount of the EDA. It is in the packet and was available to the public, but it is $59,985. And again, with the ROI that Counselor Seymour, Seymour so well described. All right. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Counselors Bill Number 37. Is there a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 37 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with Stanley Productions LLC, the operator of the Westminster Alley Market Hall on Block B-3 of downtown Westminster.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, in a fill-in, fill-in slot on this, this food court is going to be unique to our central square. The manager of this is the driving force behind the Stanley Marketplace, and then the new market in Golden, which is fabulous too. I just can't remember the name of it.
Golden Mill.
Thank you. And we're looking at potential gross sales on the front end of 3 million, but on, on, conservatively, on the other side with the history of this person that puts these together, 5 million. So this, this is an investment in that. Just in the upgrades to that space, we're looking at additional $1 million of finish on that. So this will be a great economic win for our city, and the investment on the front end is probably 25% of, of the total over five years.
Mayor Protam Demont?
I just want to state my excitement about this. Anybody who's got to do the walking tour with Mr. Burke from staff, probably was looking to place an order and realized it's not done yet, but it's a pretty exciting, and I'm excited that I was able to go do that tour and see what's coming. I think this will be a good addition to the downtown and our community.
So again, for transparency, Mr. Palmer wanted to know the amount of, the full amount of potential EDA in this. This is a very typical EDA. It's described at 50% of sales tax being rebated for a maximum of five years and for a maximum dollar amount of $250,000. So again, meets the if-not-but-for criteria for this. And as my colleague stated, as somebody who really loves food halls, because I have three kids, and it can be difficult to get everyone to want to eat the same thing. These are really fun. This is exciting. This is a premier name in food halls in our region, and it's going to be a huge boon for downtown Westminster. So I am also excited to vote yes. Counselor Seymour, another comment? Acting City Clerk Fitch, can you please do the roll call vote? Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is Item 10E, Counselors Bill Number 38. However, I do know there was a question from Counselor Smith on this item. Did you get your question answered?
It might have been. I haven't been able to check.
Okay. Well, well, I'm going to ask for a motion, and we can do that during question, comments, and concerns. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 38, modifying Title IX, Chapter VIII of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning the infrastructure program for streetlight costs and concrete replacement.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
Are there any comments, questions, and concerns on this? Counselor Smith?
Yes, thank you. It looks like staff was able to give back, but for transparency, I'd like to read to the record my question, and it was the concern with implementation of the roadway infrastructure, particularly for apartments, townhomes, and condos, asking how many more units we are adding to the fee structure. Is it 20,000? Is it 5,000? Since we are adding these additional units, can we consider reducing the fee to, say, $4 or $5 across the board, so that's particular, not particularly a big hit to those who will now be charged this fee? And this was just in regards to the public comment that we've received over the past couple of months. So if staff could respond to that in open records, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you for the opportunity to respond, Counselor Smith. So there are approximately 400 multifamily building meters that service more than approximately 35,000 units. Single-family homes have paid $6 per month since 2015, and lesser fees for those years before is described in the memo, while multifamily buildings sharing a single water meter pay a single $6 fee. There are approximately 33,000 existing units being charged the current infrastructure fee of $6 per month. Following feedback on the infrastructure fee proposal from affordable housing advocates, staff reached out directly to Maker Housing Partners and Foothill Regional Housing Authority. If tonight's ordinance passes, staff will work with not-for-profit providers of affordable housing to create assistance agreements to offset some of these impacts that were described at public comment. These partners support this approach and appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Any agreement will certainly come back to city, excuse me, will come back to city council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Any further? Mayor Protam Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank staff for their work on this. This is something that I know I had conversations with former city manager Trip when I very first started around the infrastructure fee and what it actually went to. The work to make it very transparent about exactly what this fee goes to, as well, as well as make it more equitable to the ratepayers across the city, so that everybody's kind of paying into that fund more equitably, I think is, is a good move, and I really appreciate staff's work on this piece.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I also want to say thank you to staff for their work on it, particularly to Mr. Lindsey for your update to us just tonight. I, similar to, Counselor Smith was wondering how that was going to impact specifically affording affordable housing agencies as they cannot pass through the, due to federally constrained rents, can't pass through the dollars, and it would impact their operating budget. So I appreciate your responsiveness to them and look forward to seeing what you come up with in the future. With that being said, I agree with Mayor Protam Demont that this is more equitable, that everyone that's impacting our road, you know, has to pay, pay a bit of their share. So appreciate this and look forward to voting yes tonight. With that said, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Sights?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is Item 10F1. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to ratify the acceptance of the funds in the amount of $1,731,428 received from the FY 2020 cycle of the Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Smith? Oh, okay. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Counselor Scully, will you finish out the motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move to authorize the fire department to submit an application to and accept funds from future cycles of the Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program to include FY 2021, FY 2022, FY 2023, FY 2024, and FY 2025, as applicable and available.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is Item 10G. Can I get a motion? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a third amendment to the contract for the parking lot rehabilitation project with RME Limited LLC, EBA Elite Surface Infrastructure for the Parking Lot Rehabilitation on Block A1 in downtown Westminster, in the amount of $279,509.75, and authorize a contingency of $28,000 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $307,509.75.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counselor Smith, I believe you had a question earlier today on this.
Yes, thank you. My second question was, when was the last time this parking lot was maintained? And it did look like staff responded, but for the public record, I'd like to respond.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Smith. We can ask staff to come up to the, yes, Mr. John Burke from our Economic Development Department to answer that question. Thank you.
And, Mayor, Counselors, yes, thank you for that question. So we acquired that parking lot with the acquisition of the old Westminster Mall. So that was part of the old JCPenney's parking area. Since that point in time, it's been primarily used for construction staging. Now that we have the Origin Hotels open with some additional restaurants in the area as well, we need to rehabilitate that particular lot in order to satisfy some of the EDA accessibility requirements for that lot. Additionally, we have a parking lease with the Origin Hotel that requires us to have 125 spaces designated for the hotel, 50 of those signed for them. So this rehabilitation satisfies that agreement. The future location for the hotel parking will be in a day two parking garage behind the Alamo Drafthouse. We don't know when we're going to actually build that one, so this is a really good interim solution for us the last probably another four or five years.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
And I will just say, after speaking to the manager of the Origin Hotel multiple times, he's going to be delighted to have the parking lot repaid. So seeing no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Counselor's Bill Number 39. Can I get a motion? Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 39 on first reading, implementing water and sewer taffy updates by amending sections 8-7-3 and 8-8-5 of the Westminster Municipal Code effective January 1, 2022.
Counselor Scully.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
And the motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Counselor's Bill Number 40. Counselor Seymour.
Hey, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 40 on first reading, implementing water sewer and reclaim water rate adjustments for 2022 by amending sections 8-7-7, 8-8-5, and 8-12-7 of the Westminster Municipal Code effective January 1, 2022.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Second.
There has been a motion. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I, I just have to voice my concern. I do not believe I'll be voting for this tonight. It is hard for me to vote for something that I know adds $13 million over two years to the cost of unnecessary construction. So I will be voting no. Seeing that, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Sights.
No.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number 39. Mayor Protem Demont, will you make the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 39, establishing the 2022 pay plans.
Counselor Vols.
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns on this? I just want to say thank you to our staff. We worked really hard on making sure we are an employer of choice on our recruitment and our retention. This has been a hard year. We've heard how this is the year of resignations, but I really appreciate that our employees are one of our most valuable assets and allow us to provide public value to our community. Thank you for helping us make them feel that. Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the mayor's comments, especially around the work that you did on the Metagap and continue to do. I think there's still room to make that even more appealing, to bring laterals over who have some experience. Not that I want to rob our neighbors with their good help, but I do. So if you could continue to work on that, I think that that gives us some opportunity to get some good experienced people from other municipalities. But thank you for the work that you put into doing all the things the mayor said.
Counselor Smith.
Yes, thank you. Wanted to also echo my colleagues. There was great work done on this budget. I feel more comfortable with this budget than I did last and feel confident in moving forward with it. I also want to note that the, I recognize the changes that staff had made to the proposed budget, adding in those communication metrics. So I very much appreciate that and I will be a yes vote tonight for that.
Seeing no other comments, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number 40. Counselor Seymour.
Hey, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 40, setting the 2021 mill levy collectible in 2022, adopting the Budget and Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2022.
And I believe you were the second, Mayor Protem?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Counselor's Bill Number 41. Counselor Seymour, can you finish out the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 41 on first reading, making preparations to pay the expense of continuing the public business for the year 2022 and other purposes required by the charter and by any other law.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to continue to echo outstanding work that was done on this budget process and greatly appreciated. Thank you.
This is a roll call vote. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. All right. Well, that was the last item for the Westminster City Council. However, we are going to reconfigure under the G, well, this is part of Westminster City Council under the GID's Agenda Board Motions. So what is our exact, I'm sorry, the exact title that I should say? So I close the Westminster City Council and open up the GID Board meeting? Do I need to functionally do them as two separate things like we do with WIDA?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. As the city council sits ex officio as the governing body of each of our general improvement districts, my suggestion would be that you would convene the general improvement district agenda so that you can consider the items that were considered on tonight's agenda for all of the GIDs in the city.
All right. We will have our roll call vote. Still stand from the prior city council meeting. We have had consultation with our city attorney that we can have the consideration of the minutes read as one very long motion.
Yes, you can.
And I have already pressed Board Member Seymour into duty on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess you have to be careful what you suggest. I move that the board approve the minutes of the October 12, 2020 meeting of the 136th Avenue General Improvement District, the 144th Avenue General Improvement District, the Amherst General Improvement District, the Downtown General Improvement District.
Because they're different dates, do we need to? Is that okay?
You're correct. They're all October 12th except for one.
Okay, I will amend my motion then.
Sorry.
Thank you. I didn't catch that. I move the board approve the minutes of the October 12, 2020 meeting of the 136th Avenue General Improvement District, 144th Avenue General Improvement District, the Amherst General Improvement District, the Mandalay Town Center General Improvement District, the Orchard Park Place North General Improvement District, the Park 1200 General Improvement District, the Sheridan Crossing General Improvement District, and the Westminster Station General Improvement District, and move the minutes of November 9, 2020 for the Downtown General Improvement District. As presented.
There is motion. Is there a second? Counselor, or Board Member Scully?
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. Vice Chair Demont. No comments? Okay. All right. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The minutes pass. The next item before us is to hold a public hearing on the 2022 budgets of the following city of Westminster General Improvement Districts. Can I get a motion read? Counselor, or Board Member Scully?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Hold a, I move to hold a public hearing on the 2022 budgets for the following city of Westminster General Improvement Districts, 136th Avenue, 144th Avenue, Amherst Downtown, Mandalay Town Center, Orchard Park Place North, Park 1200, Sheridan Crossing, and Westminster Station.
Is there a second to open the public hearing? Board Member Vols.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I second the motion.
Is there any presentation for this public hearing? Or is it just open? Okay. Does anyone want to comment on this public hearing? Mr. Palmer? And the time for the record is 10:20.
Would it be possible for you to put real numbers to each one of these improvement districts for the budget? And I know you keep saying they're in the packet. Well, not everybody's online. Not everybody in this community has access to that. So for the general public's information, please. But if you could put real numbers to these, each that riches, the Counselor Seymour's sectioned out there, I'm sure it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Hey. The next item is to item 3B. Is there a motion? Vice Chair Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 4 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 35 mills for the city of Westminster. Westminster Station General Improvement District formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Scully.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions or concerns? Board Member Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That 35 mil will generate property tax revenues of $4,785 based on the current valuations in that area and projected revenues, including ownership tax, in 2022 of $6,622 with matching expenditures for a net of zero on that 35 mil authorization.
Okay. Thank you for reading that out. Any other comments or questions? If not, this is a roll call vote. Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chair Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item is 3C. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 26 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 16 mills for the city of Westminster, 136th Avenue General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Chair, Board Member Smith.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Board Member Seymour.
Thank you, Chair. That 16 mil levy will generate $10,919 in valuations with matching expenditures for that, for that budget.
There has been a motion and a second. There's no further. This is a roll call vote. Chair Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item is item 3D. Can I get a motion? Vice Chair Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 20 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 20 mills for the city of Westminster, 144th Avenue General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Board Member Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That mill levy will generate $146,792 with matching expenditures for the 2022 budget.
This is a roll call vote. Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
And Chair Sights.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is, my apologies, is item 3E. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 41 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 5 mills for the city of Westminster, Amherst General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Madam Mayor, according to the staff memo, this will generate in 2022 an estimated $117,295 for the Amherst GID.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
And Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number 5. Can I get a motion? Mayor, or Vice Chair Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 5 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 35 mills for the city of Westminster Downtown General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Board Member Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is a little more complicated, 35 mills, but this is split valuation with Jefferson County and limited ownership taxes that we split on the increment. May have to be corrected later to the record, but we're looking at approximately $3,000 in ownership jet in 205,992, but that is then split with Jefferson County.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
And Board Member Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. The next item before us is Resolution Number 25. Vice Chair Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 25 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, reflection in 2022 at 35 mills for the city of for collection in 2022 at 35 mills for the city of Westminster, Mandalay Town Center General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Board Member Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This 35-mill, based on the current valuations from 2021, will generate property tax revenues of $103,258.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
And Board Member Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote. The next item before us is Resolution number 14. Can I get a motion from Vice Chair Demont?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution number 14 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2021, for collection in 2022 at 13 mills for the Westminster Orchard Park Place North General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2022 budget for the district and presented, as presented, and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Board Member Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Comments, questions, or concerns? Looking your way, Seymour. Hurry up. Board Member Seymour.
I'm gonna at you. The 13 mills on this, based on property tax revenues, will generate in 2022, and this does not include interest earnings or intergovernmental revenue on this location, $4,983.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Vice Chair Demont.
Yes.
Chairperson Sights.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote. The next item is Resolution number eight. Vice Chair Demont.